Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Friday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district and today are located on the Takamloops to Shakwetmak territory, situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shakwetmak Nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with Takamloops to Shakwetmak and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. And before we get on, just a letter that is hot off the presses came in from Ministry of Emergency Management and Climate Readiness. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting, but wanted to let you know that it states in part, "I am pleased to confirm that in response to feedback from local authorities, the engagement period on the new Emergency and Disaster Management Act has been extended to January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four." The letter continues, "I can also share that in recognition of the unique circumstances of regional districts, the province intends to make regulations that will limit the minimum required scope of regional district plans to geographic areas for which the making of plans is most critical. This is one of the policy areas for consideration in the broad engagement that is currently underway. We look forward to receiving feedback from the Thompson-Nicholat Regional District. As you'll recall, we did write to them expressing our concerns about how the regulations would apply to areas as vast as regional districts." So you can look forward to reading that in full, but we have until January thirty-first to make recommendations and suggestions regarding the new Emergency Management Act. We have the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting from October thirteenth. Second, thank you, Director Stanky, seconded by Vice Chair Smith. Are there any errors or omissions? On the question, all those in favor, opposed if any carried. Moving on, item four point one, TNRD ongoing initiatives update. Good morning to our External Relations and Advocacy Advisor, Mr. Kelly, who will make a presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and through to the board. It is, it's been a while since my last verbal update. I had to go back and review, and the last verbal update that I provided to the board was in September. So since then, there's been a number of initiatives that have taken place or since concluded, the main one being UBCM. Certainly, that was one of our, our main focuses when I started this position. I think we can all agree that it was, it was a very big success this year. We had great meetings with ministers. Staff worked hard to have preamble meetings with senior leadership within those ministries to ensure that the ministers were up to date and up to speed on, on what it was that we were requesting. Discussions have started with all school districts within the Thompson-Nicholat Regional District regarding the potential youth board. Our hope is that an inaugural meeting of a youth board can take place in two thousand and twenty-four before the end of the school year. We hosted a community-to-community forum with Takamloops to Shakwetmak with an agreement expected to be signed in two thousand and twenty-four, an additional relationship building to occur. This community-to-community forum did include directors who were directly within Takamloops' territory. We currently have an ongoing working group with SIMK in the North Thompson, and this is moving us towards the possibility of, of signing as well another agreement looking into two thousand and twenty-four with SIMK. Any meetings with First Nations, and I do want to emphasize this, have been specifically with staff of those First Nations. So there's been no meetings really taking place by myself with elected leadership. And if that were to be the case, then we would certainly want to include the impacted directors. Our sponsorship of Silga is still to be determined. The previous sponsor from last year who sponsored the reception has first right of refusal. They haven't given a clear answer as to whether or not they are going to move forward with sponsoring Silga two thousand and twenty-four's reception, but we are hopeful that we will be able to, to sponsor that portion of the convention. The majority of my work is being tied back to the strategic plan as much as possible. We are also working with communications to develop a number of ongoing plans in terms of email signatures and updating wording on website to be more accommodating. One message that we've received certainly from the First Nations that we've been engaging with so far is that, you know, that it's, it's time for action, and that's what we're trying to move towards. We, we want to make sure that what we're doing is more than just nice words and that we're actually trying to back it up with some action. You know, the communications is, is a key piece of that. We're also, I'm also working with the hospital district regarding First Nations taxation concerns, specifically regarding Sun Rivers and Sienna Ridge. The Indigenous cultural awareness training has been offered to the board with a ninety percent completion rate. I have been here now for five months. I'm still absorbing a lot. I'm not done my probation yet, so, you know, we are looking, looking to the next year, two years, three years, and certainly wanting to strategically plan out what that looks like and making sure that we're moving the organization in, in the right direction. So I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the update. Don't anyone run away with the idea that five months only into the probation, so there's still time. And we have Director Bass and Director Sau and Director Thorpe. Director Bass.
Thanks. Um, thank you, Corbin, two questions. First of all, I was uncomfortable during the delegation yesterday. So from your perspective, with your experience with First Nations, should we have some kind of protocol in place when we're having delegations that include First Nations people? Because first of all, it seemed to go sideways, and, and I felt a little disrespect.
Absolutely. I, I think that that's something that I can certainly take back in terms of developing something and bringing it back perhaps to policy and governance to, to work out what that could look like, especially, I personally had no idea that their, their cookbeat was going to be in the room and providing a presentation, and so there certainly should have been some additional protocols and procedures that, that we might want to make sure that we have in place. So I can certainly take that back.
Thank you. And second question, in terms of the Indigenous training, which by the way was exceptional, I'm, I'm curious about the cost because you say only ninety percent of the board took part. So did we end up paying money for some people who just didn't do it? And how much would that have been?
Yeah, thank you, and through to the board. The training, as it was unanimously adopted by the board, was three hundred dollars per person. It was also offered to hospital district directors, some of which withdrew, but they don't have a strategic plan that they need to be tied back to the way that our regular board does. So the, the cost was three hundred dollars per person.
So about a thousand dollars was spent that wasn't actually taken up on. Is that basically?
Give or take.
Okay. Well, that's unfortunate since everybody voted for it, but nevertheless, I'm glad that, that we did it, those of us who did.
Thank you. And just to that point, directors from the previous board will remember that we did discuss protocols for when we have chiefs and council members from First Nations here, and we did not develop a formal policy at that time acknowledging that there were many difficulties in whom, who do you address? And, and how do you necessarily know if there is someone in the gallery who is representing a First Nation? I think yesterday also we're seeing a blurring of the lines between someone being here representing their First Nation and someone being here as part of a proponent for a business. So again, just a reminder that we have looked at this before. If we do move forward, it's not as simple and straightforward as some might like to hope it would be. We have Director Sau and then Director Thorpe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you, Corbin, or Mr. Kelly, could you clarify what these agreements that we're working on, what, what it revolves around? Thank you.
Yeah, so through to the, to Director Sau, the agreements are memorandums of understanding or protocol agreements. They essentially outline the relationship that the TNRD will have with that specific First Nation. So I can't really get into the specifics because we don't have agreements that are necessarily framed out right now, but it essentially outlines the need to have a working group with the First Nation or wanting to ensure that we're engaging with them on projects that are within their traditional territory or those types of things. So that's, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Thorpe, then Director Stamer.
Still have my questions. Okay. Question. Oh, geez. Your presentation, would it be possible to get that in writing, like maybe part of the board package so that if we have a chance to look at it, we can maybe absorb some of this and have more relevant questions going forward? And?
CEO Hildebrand. My mouthful.
Sorry. Uh, thank you to the Chair, to the Director, to Director Thorpe. That's something that in the new year that during my, my monthly CEO updates, Corbin's going to, Mr. Kelly is going to provide his update as well, and it will not come out in a package for the agenda, but it'll come out as an email to the board a few days prior to the meeting. A lot of the information that I provide or Corbin would provide would be very timely and to actually provide that report on the agenda, then to come back to the meeting and say the exact same thing might not make sense. So you will get the highlights and you'll get that before the meeting, which will allow you to kind of prepare for more questions and, and dialogue.
Perfect, thanks. One more other question. You were talking about Silga and you were saying that the reception was a possibility. We had talked, I think, at one point about, I can't remember if it was the breakfast or if it was the welcoming, maybe doing that. So if we do not get the reception, do we still get second dibs, basically?
Yes and no. So there are other things that can be sponsored. The overwhelming response from the board was that we didn't want to sponsor, I believe it's the breakfast that's poorly attended. So that was clear that we, that is not something that we want to sponsor with the level of sponsorship that we've offered to Silga. So if we are not able to sponsor the welcome reception, then I would certainly probably want to bring it back either to a committee of the whole or a board to at least get some direction in terms of where we would like to go, whether that's sponsoring something else that would fall under the gold level sponsorship or dropping our sponsorship level to something else, just making sure that, you know, we are going to sponsor something that's going to be well-attended.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Two things, on the Silga part, portion of that, I, I sit on the Board of Silga. We just had a meeting on Friday talking about the convention. We're extremely excited about what's coming down the pipe here, and it's too bad that Director Sai isn't here, Sarai isn't here to back me up on this, but that first full day, the whole entire morning, including lunch, will be at Takamloops. And the, the, the wide variety of, of activities that are planned, I want to make, make sure that everyone in this room has the opportunity to attend because it's going to be really, really good and for a wide variety of different, different reasons, both emotionally, spiritually, intellectually, it's, it's going to be awesome. So I would hope that you could have an opportunity to talk to Ms. Slater and find out, you know, what those opportunities are when it comes to sponsorship, because there's going to be all hands on deck when we, when do, we do this stuff. It's going to be a really tight program this year. We'll have more news in, in January about it, but everyone's going to, there'll be something for everyone to do. There's going to be some really good seminars because of the location, you know, there's going to be the opportunity for everyone to, to participate, and so we're really looking forward to it. The other thing I'd like to, to point out on the MOU is that mayors of Vailmont, Clearwater, and myself, along with Chief Lampro, have worked very hard to work on this MOU that, that we're doing in the valley, and that includes all of us here at, at this table. And I think that it would be prudent to be able to include us in those discussions when you're talking about the drafting of the MOU, because we brought that forth at UBCM to the minister, explaining what the circumstances were, and as soon as she realized that we were willing to sign an MOU together, she was ecstatic. Basically, that when we do sign it in the spring, probably up in Jasper or somewhere like that, the premier will be there, she'll be there. It's going to be a historic, an historic event, and I wouldn't want, you know, a separation of things that are on the MOU, because that was the clear intention from the beginning is that we're all in this together, and so that we don't want to have any side deals or anything else like that, and the chief agrees, is that we want to make sure that we're going forth together, and I think that there may be an opportunity for us to have that conversation with the mayors and the TNRD, and then that will also include, once that comes through, to be able to include all the area directors involved as well.
Thank you, Director Getz.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, just on Director Bass's comments, as far as the Seneas training, for myself, I let you know that I was taking it through the city. Did that, was that able to not be charged, or did you still have to pay like a bulk rate even though I was taking the training somewhere else?
Through the Chair to Director Getz, no. So we did remove you from the total list of, of directors that the training was offered to, so you, your spot was not paid for.
Director Nystater.
Thank you, Chair. Just to Director Stamer's comments, I'm also on the planning executive for Silga. So if there are any questions in the room about what's happening locally for the upcoming convention, please feel free to see Director Sarai or myself or Director Stamer. We would love to tell you more, but just to echo those comments in his absence, I fully back you up.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Kelly? Director Rain.
Yeah, sorry, I may have misunderstood. We're negotiating protocol agreement with whom?
With Takamloops and with SIMK. SIMK First Nation in the North Thompson.
Okay, yeah. And on behalf of the TNRD or?
On behalf of the TNRD, yeah.
And have the terms, kind of, conditions been given to the board or?
Not yet, no. We, we aren't at that point yet.
You negotiate it and then you give it to the board?
CEO Hildebrand wants to weigh in, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. No, we're just, we're prepping the meeting for the board to sit down with their elected officials to actually walk through an MOU and come to an agreement that makes sense mutually. So we are just doing the behind-the-scenes work with staff to get that lined up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly, is there anything more to add to that?
No, there's nothing more to add. That's correct.
Yeah, I guess I have a little concern if the framework isn't there and it's, you create expectations and the board is, is kind of in a box. Second issue I had, you said C to C with whom?
Uh, was a community-to-community forum with Takamloops.
Yeah. And who was invited?
So that was all of the City of Kamloops directors, and then any director that was within Takamloops' territory. So I believe it was directors from Area J, L, P. And I think that was it. I would have to review the minutes.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is when it comes to Sun Peaks, one day we're in, one day we're out, and there are some overlapping conflicts there, and certainly when issues come up, we do receive correspondence from Takamloops. I, I would have liked to have been part of that.
Perhaps we could just, when, when we are setting out to start setting up these, these things with First Nations, perhaps we could just look at who might be expected to be included and then maybe cast the net a little bit wider than we might think appropriate just to make sure that we aren't leaving anyone such as Director Rain at Sun Peaks out. And also regarding that meeting, I was invited as well as Chair, even though I'm not in Takamloops to Shakwetmak territory, unfortunately, I had a conflicting thing with the Village of Ashcroft that day. Director Sarai took my place as the Chair with Cookby, Roseanne, and I understand did an absolutely fantastic job, so very, very good representation from the TNRD. Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And just to add too on the MOU is that, just to give, just a quick update, I mean, we were, before COVID, because we've already signed an MOU with, with SIMK First Nations, and the next, I mean, it was, it was respectful and it was, you know, basically a two-pager like most MOUs are, you know, whether it's city accounts, city of merit, you know, wherever. But the next ask was about like that, and, and we were the first ones that were presented with it, and as soon as we started going through it, there was a bunch of assumptions and things in there, even from, from a charter perspective that we couldn't agree upon because we didn't even have the authority to do it. So there's been a lot of work already on that MOU, and then once we had the opportunity to meet with the mayors of Vailmont, Clearwater, and Chief Lampro in Vailmont last year, it was decided at that meeting that we would be signing the MOU together. So once we get through that process of what the MOU looks like, there will be an opportunity, I'm sure, that we can have a closed meeting so that everybody in this room can have a look at it, so that everyone's comfortable, because let's face it, you know, when we sign the MOU with the TNRD, that's all of us here included. So if there's any, you know, misconceptions or anything like that, don't worry about it, because once we get to the point of showing it to you, I'm sure you're going to be very comfortable with it. But there will be that opportunity once we get to that step. I'm sure Mr. Mr. Kelly is, already knows that, and then once we, you know, basically get it all straight, then we can have an opportunity to have a closed meeting, we can have a look at it, hopefully everybody's on board, and then we can pick the date and then we'll be able to go forward with it.
Thank you. I have Director Lepso and then Director Houghton.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to update Mr. Kelly and the rest of the board, what the Village of Chase has succeeded in doing with our Shakwetmak neighbors. We now meet monthly, the City of Salmon Arm and our three Shakwetmak neighbors, our monthly meetings, and the system we have is they have their regular monthly meeting first, then the City of Salmon Arm gets twenty minutes, we get twenty minutes, and then we have lunch together. It's working really good, and one of the greatest things that happened is, oh, last Wednesday, they had a grand opening for their health center, and they invited, they had invited myself and the Mayor Salmon Arm to come, and I asked them if they could invite Sarah Reid, who manages our interior health hospital in Chase. Not only did they invited her, they had her up as a guest speaker, and they fully integrated her into their system afterwards. So we're actually interior health and, and Adams Lake Band are not fighting for doctors or nurses, we're actually working as one, so just good stuff. Thank you.
Director Houghton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Kelly, I just want to thank you for the effort you made earlier on this year. I would say it was in August, the day after Mr. Gillis's passing, that you put on that nice Zoom meeting downstairs at, at my request with the different ministries of, that were involved in, I call it Water Wars two thousand and twenty-three in the Salmon River watershed, and that dialogue that started that day and the work that we did, I think at UBCM and the presentations we made and the contacts that we made, seemed to have got the two sides together and talking. They weren't talking before. They sent in the NROs with their guns and, you know, all the rest of it, but I just got a letter from Gaylene Buff from Westwood. She invited the head of the Forestry Department and Vernon to their meeting here a few days ago, and Mr. Crampton has invited a representative from their association to sit on a, a water planning committee for two thousand and twenty-four, because we all know that this stuff's not going to end. So it seems like the dialogue has started there, and I think it's efforts that you've made and we made collectively that, you know, to me, it's, it's a good news story. I just want to thank you, Corbin.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Kelly? Nope. Director Thorpe, just under the wire.
I was debating it. So when we're having these discussions with some of the municipalities and First Nations, I think it's really important that we do include EA directors because we represent a significant number of residents. And so if we're having discussions where I, I appreciate the amount of work that Barrier and Clearwater and everybody have done, but I also think that the EA directors need to be in those meetings too, right from the get-go, rather than at the very end where everything is already settled and we're just going along with whatever has done, been done, because I think our residents deserve a voice as well. Thank you.
Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and yes, absolutely, Director Thorpe. Mainly what we're talking about in a lot of this stuff is the legal side of things, and that's why, you know, we've spent an incredible amount of time, because the MOU is a working document, and there's, and there's things in that document that are always constantly changing. So yes, when there's that opportunity for you to be able to see it, it's not like there's any assumptions made or anything that's going to be specific to any of your residents or anybody else. That's why we're all doing it together, and absolutely you'll be involved in that at the same time, but right now, it's more of the legal language and how that is put together. Mr. Kelly, I don't know if you've actually seen the MOU or not, but I mean, we've already just about got it to where we're all pretty much ready to agree on, on the wording in that, so maybe you could just allude to that.
If I may, yeah. Just to clarify, again, the conversations that we're having with First Nations currently are with their staff. It's essentially laying out what they would like to potentially see in an agreement, you know, using sample agreements that they've drafted previously. So when, when Director Stamer, you know, that's what SIMK has showed us to say, you know, if we're going to do something with TNRD, it should look like this, or, you know, include the TNRD in this actual agreement. So those are the conversations that are happening. The concern would be if we're going to start including everyone in those conversations, they would quickly spin out of control, because Director Stamer's right, it's simply just trying to process what the First Nation wants to see from the TNRD, and then also making sure that when we take that back, that legally we have the authority to fit that into what the authority of, of the TNRD is. So yeah, just again, you know, the, the meetings that we're having with First Nations currently are, are with staff, it's not with elected representatives. When it is with elected representatives, we will absolutely include the necessary board members, and we will cast a wider net going forward to make sure that we're including folks that, you know, it, it might not necessarily seem like they're within that boundary, but just wanting to make sure that we are, yeah, casting that wider net.
Thank you. Apparent, yes, Director, but I've seen, Director Blackwell is apparently hiding online and has his hand up. So Director Blackwell, please go ahead. Director Blackwell.
There we go. And now I have to be allowed to be able to speak because I, I snuck in as a guest, I guess. Anyways, just to back up Director Stamer's comments, I haven't even seen this draft. This is a staff-to-staff discussion. It's also happening with the town of Vailmont. This is across the, the traditional territory of the SIMK First Nation, and quite frankly, those boilerplates need to be put together by staff before it comes to even my council or Ward's Council or Owen's Council in Vailmont, because there's a lot of work that has to be done behind the scenes. So, you know, I know that people want to see these things, but this definitely be a case of too many cooks in the kitchen. Let that legal work happen before it comes to us.
Thank you, and Director Morris.
Thank you, and just, just a question, Director Stamer. In the current structure, I'm curious if you can share who, you, you're speaking, what you mentioned or alluded to, the people that you're working with right now, just a sense of who they may be, just so that I understand the, the structure, who you've got on the committee at, at present or the, the working group. Obviously, I'm thinking in terms of the Takamloops, Shakwetmak, and the C to Cs that I've been involved with that, but that broader picture of what you're doing is helpful.
Yeah, thanks. Just briefly, what we're, we're basically, the MOU is only involving the traditional territory of SIMK First Nation, and that's from basically Vinsula to Jasper. And, and the reason why it's been at the levels that it's been previously is because previously we had memorandum understandings with all those municipalities, and then of course, it only makes sense to have the TNRD fill in the gaps, because, you know, pretty much, quite frankly, that's how it works, and that's why it's like that. But again, you know, we all have a responsibility here, so, you know, we all have to agree that this is, this is something that we want to do as a group, even though, you know, like, like Director Thorpe, she's not in SIMK First Nation traditional lands, you know, so that's, but we still want to be inclusive of everyone in this room, and that's like, as, as Director Blackwell has mentioned, most of the work behind the scenes is being done through staff and through the legal side of things. I've seen, I've seen the original, I've seen a couple of variations of it. I'm not involved in the day-to-day type of process of putting this in, taking this out, that sort of thing. That's between all the staff members and, and SIMK. that sort of thing, that's between all the staff members and SIMP. But going forward, you know, we're hoping that this could almost be a template for some of the other agreements with the other First Nations within the DNRD as a whole. And that's why it's as important, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, that try to get it as right as we can. Some are going to be different than others. Some are going to want, you know, different things in their memorandum of understanding. My position on that is that it's a living, breathing document. It's something that, as we go forward, we can enhance it, we can make it better for all of us. To me, it doesn't matter that, just because this is what we've set up in January 2024, we might want to do something different in 2026. It's more an understanding that we're willing to work together. And I think that Chief Lampro would back me up on that, as that's what's important to them as well.
Thank you, Director Thorpe.
And just a point of clarification. I wasn't suggesting that I needed to be part of the SIMP conversation. That one's not in my wheelhouse. I was thinking more of the area directors that are in that area because it does impact their citizens. I've got 13 of my own. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your report, and thank you, everyone, for the robust discussion. And I don't see any other hands. Just check with Director Blackwell, who's gone back to, oh, no, there he is. We flushed him out of hiding. All right, so we move on to item 4.2, Fire Department Dispatch Radio Telecommunication System. The floor is yours, Mr. Fiera.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning, Board. I just want to start off by saying thank you to this board for all the hard work you've put in for this year. And I'm saying that in particular about this week. There's been heavy things on the agenda, starting with our EA, our Utilities Committee on Wednesday. And I'm partially saying thank you as a way to apologize for the heavy report that you have in front of you here on this topic as well. But it's important. So, I'm just going to give a very brief kind of presentation introduction to our speaker, who will be going into more detail on this report. But to set the stage and a bit of a reminder for the board around our regional 911 service. So, we have a regional service, and this is the responsibility of regional districts to provide 911 service. And what that incorporates is what we call both primary dispatch for 911 and secondary dispatch. What primary dispatch is, is the operator on the other end of the line that receives the call and directs you to fire a police ambulance. We have a contract through a company called ECOM, and we coordinate with other regional districts in the Southern Interior on that contract. I won't speak about that anymore. Actually, there'll probably be a report coming to the board early next year about the renewal of that contract. But once that call comes in, that ECOM person on the other end, dispatcher who receives the call, then dispatches that call to either Fire Department Dispatch, Ambulance Dispatch, or Police Dispatch, sorry, Police, Ambulance and Fire. Fire, sorry, Police and Ambulance are not our problem. Those are handled separately. RCMP deals with the Fire Dispatch, and Ambulance Service deals with their dispatch. When it comes to the Fire Departments, that's where it does fall into our wheelhouse. So, when we talk about secondary 911 dispatch, that's our responsibility, it's the Fire Departments. And when I say Fire Departments, I'm talking about every Fire Department within the TNRD. So, all the municipal departments, all the First Nation departments, and the Improvement District departments. The City of Kamloops is a bit of an exception. Now, the City of Kamloops is part of our Fire Dispatch, but they actually operate their own dispatch out of the Kamloops Fire Hall Number One. And we, the TNRD, contract with them to provide those dispatching services out to all of the Fire Departments outside the City of Kamloops. So, City Kamloops, even though, for the directors in this room, even though this infrastructure isn't part of the system that services the City of Kamloops Fire Department, it is a service that the staff at the City of Kamloops, who are providing the service to the region as a whole, are relying on. So, now, in a very quick overview of how that works, there's TNRD equipment in the City of Kamloops dispatch area as well as in every Fire Department in the regional district to communicate with each other. So, the dispatcher can communicate with whoever, whatever department is being dispatched. Now, if it was only that simple, that it was just these base stations in each fire hall talking to each other, the challenge is, we live in B.C., there's a lot of big mountains, and our regional district is huge. So, what you'll be hearing here and seeing in the report is our, a report reviewing our existing infrastructure that sends the radio signals to all the far corners and valleys of the TNRD to be able, for those Fire Departments, to be able to communicate with dispatch. The current system that we have in place now, that was reviewed as part of this report, was put in place in the early 2000s. There was a request for proposal that went out from the TNRD looking for essentially a company to build out a system that provided this communication. That was installed about 22 years ago. Since that time, we've just been in a maintenance mode, only kind of critical repairs and maintenance only. There's been no significant upgrades, and really, nothing like this done where we looked at where there's gaps and where improvements can be made. We've definitely heard concerns from many Fire Departments, or I have through my last couple of years in this position. So, we decided this year to do a full review of our system and then find out what the recommendations are to improve that system. That report was just finalized literally a couple of weeks ago, and so, we put it on the agenda for discussion here. Our consultant who did the report is from Planet Works Consulting. His name's Maury Kapustianik, and he will be addressing us shortly to go into the details. As you'll see, there's a lot of details in this report and very specific recommendations. At this point, we're not looking for this committee to make a recommendation to the board, because even at a staff level, we're still digesting what this looks like and what the priorities need to be for these capital improvements. But there will be more recommendations forthcoming to the board. But we want this to really be the first opportunity for this board to sort of understand the scope and scale of what we existing, existing infrastructure and what needs to be done to kind of move us forward to improve the service. One more piece before I pass it along to Maury is that this is a critical component of our emergency response system. Within our staff structure here, the responsibility falls within our Fire Protection Services Department. So, that's Jason Tomlin behind me oversees that. So, just to kind of set the stage of what it looks like in the background, himself and two staff, our full-time staff are in our Fire Protection Services Department. So, he's overseeing nine Fire Departments of our own, plus seven service contracts with member municipalities, plus the Regional Fire Smart Program, plus the Regional 911 Service. So, what you'll see here today is it's very critical of our, how our system needs to be sort of improved and some of the gaps that we have. I just want this board to understand that, as much as I'd like, we don't have a Department of IT radio professionals that are working on this on a day-to-day basis. It's really been on the side of staff's desk for, as long as the TNRD has kind of been responsible for this. So, I just want that to be understood, that that's the reality that we're in at this point. So, with that, I will turn it over to Maury to present his report.
Before, excuse me, Director Stamer just wanted to make a point or ask a question.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks very much, Jamie. I'm just looking at the map again, and I think anybody who's been out in the bush knows, you know, the limitations of VHF systems and that sort of thing. Question, with this new emergency preparedness legislation and act that's coming down the pipe, has the government given us, provincial government, given us any indication that, you know, as we review a bunch of these programs and plans, that there may be additional funding for this? Because again, a lot of this stuff is old technology, and we do not have cell coverage in the TNRD to be able to adequately have a proper working 911 system, hence the VHF system. Has there been anything at all, or is, you know, what are we going to be able to do on the funding side of things? Because I'm just looking through the report again, and looking at the discrepancies in what we have in the bank and what we don't have. Has anybody at the provincial party, provincial government level to discuss with Mr. Shrebnik or anybody else to say that, hey, once you guys have more responsibility, we know this is fire, but this is also a bunch of other 911 stuff. Is there any, going to be any additional funds going to be coming down the pipe for this kind of upgrades, for these kinds of upgrades?
We haven't heard anything yet in terms of anything related to the new emergency management legislation. I do refer in the report to specific, there's been specific grants received by municipalities and ourselves and the City of Council related to upgrades for NG 911, but not to this emergency management legislation, no.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we will turn it over to Maury Kapustianik.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's a good attempt at my last name. Thank you.
A good attempt. That means I didn't get it right enough for that, I apologize.
It's, yeah, Kapustianik. Thank you. All right. I will just share my screen. And you can see my screen, okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and Board, to present a high-level discussion of the report and review I did for the emergency communication system that Jamie had highlighted earlier. So... So, as Jamie pointed out, this is a high-level diagram of how dispatch works. With the 911 call to the left happening, they pick up their phone, they make a call to ECOM. ECOM picks it up and decides who should get it, police, fire, or ambulance. If it's fire, then it goes to the Kamloops Fire Dispatch Center. And then, you can see to the right this box with dotted box with a bunch of a bunch of stuff inside. You can see that the cloud there represents what Jamie referred to as our Fire Dispatch radio system. And the red clouds are all the different fire protection areas that you have. So, right now, you have 27 fire protection areas. And then, what glues the Fire Dispatch system, their technology in the Fire Hall One in Kamloops, to your radio system is a radio interface point. And that interface point right now is also at the main fire hall in Kamloops. So, Fire Departments use generally three types of radios to do their job. The first one is a pager that they carry on their hip, usually 24/7. And when a dispatch is made from Kamloops Fire, they send out over the radio system to the targeted area a code, and the pager will alarm the Fire Department personnel that they have to go on a call. The other two items that they use are the actual radios themselves, are two-way radios. So, some of the radios are in vehicles, are called mobile radios, and some of the radios are called portable radios, which they carry around in their hand. So, the crux, and one of the directors pointed out that there are, there's limited cell coverage within areas like the TNRD, and VHF radio is used to help get the distance and get the best possible coverage. And that's one of the natures of VHF radio. So, here's your region, and you can see that it's a very vast region, and it's, for radio, it's probably one of the ugliest scenarios because there's so many mountains and twists and turns and valleys. So, it's a very tricky thing to do without you requiring a lot of equipment. So, in this diagram, you'll see two different types of regions. You'll see a green regions, and you'll see the yellow, basically, roads. The green regions are the 27 different fire protection areas that you have. And it basically encompasses the areas where we want to have those two-way radios and pagers operating well. In the road rescue areas, those are areas where typically you're outside the typical fire protection areas, and they're off helping people in more remote areas or certainly outside their towns and so on. And I also put on that diagram a bunch of blue triangles, and those are, those represent the cell towers that are in your regional district at this time. And as you can see, there are many areas where, certainly with road rescue, there just is no cell coverage and there is no radio coverage. And so, there, when they go to responses in those areas, they usually just don't have a way of communicating back to dispatch. So, your current system looks like this. Each one of those dots represents the fire halls, 27 fire halls, and those red lines represent basically mountaintop to mountaintop radio links that kind of bring back the two-way communications from a certain VHF repeater back to dispatch. So, the goal is that dispatch can reach out to any one of those dots and talk to them on demand without anything holding them back. Right now, you have a very small set of links that connects about half of your fire halls directly to dispatch. The other dots that don't have red lines are Fire Departments that rely on different forms of public networks to communicate back to dispatch. I don't think, what would have happened, I think, is that the system got built out to a point, and then, from, once either budgets or whatever decisions were made, they could not complete building out those links to these other areas. On to the left, you'll see a dispatch screen. So, the dispatcher at Fire Hall One will basically pick one of those icons, which represents a Fire Department. And when they press it, it connects them through this whole network to the very Fire Department, and they can talk back and forth. This is what your mountaintops look like. There's five current mountaintop sites. Four of the five are owned and leased to the regional district by Kamloops Communications. And the one site at Mount Duffrin is owned and operated by the City of Kamloops. So, you can see here, these are isolated buildings at the top of mountains with antenna structures and a building. Here's examples of some of the fire halls that you have in your district. These represent the different types of, I guess, politically different types of Fire Departments. As you'll notice, each one of the fire halls have an antenna on it, and they are connected to radios within the hall that communicate on this network back to Kamloops Fire Dispatch. For many of the Fire Departments, their main transmitters come out from their fire halls. And they were done traditionally because that was a location that they can easily co-locate equipment in. Most of these fire halls are not strategically located to provide the best coverage for the region. And hence, one of the big gaps that we found in the study is the location of your repeaters. What do we do when we look at these systems? We basically look at these five high-level areas. We look at the radio coverage, the capacity of the system. How reliable is the system? Does it have the right functionality to make the system usable and seamless for the users? And then, how do we maintain it? How do you build it out? How do you fix it? So, we look at these five high levels. There are some standards, of course, that we adhere to when we're building out these systems. NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, or Association, is the big one as far as how the system is to behave. And the biggest and most important element of that standard is what kind of radio coverage goals you want to meet. The other standards like CSA and R56 and provincial national electrical codes are more technical standards that we try to adhere to, to make sure that the site is going to work well, resilient, and safe. The review process, what we did is we talked first with the stakeholders at the regional district and within the Fire Departments and the contractors and vendors, everyone who's been involved with the current system so far, and got their input about the state of the system and how things happen for the system. We then put together a radio user survey document that we sent out to all the Fire Departments, and we asked the Fire Departments to respond with answers to a long list of questions. We also created a computer-generated map showing where we believe their radio coverage works and it doesn't work. And we asked them to review it and respond, acknowledging whether the maps generally close enough or where we're not quite right. We then went to all the sites and looked at all the sites. We went to dispatch and then went to all the sites and looked at all the sites. We went to dispatch and looked at the dispatch system there. And then took all this information in and did a review of the whole system architecture. The collaboration part with their fire departments were very important. So we, again, the survey, they looked at radio maps. We went on site and we talked to all the fire departments that were available to talk about this. This was during wildfire season, so it was difficult for some to to attend. And then from that first step in this study, we created this document called a baseline assessment, which basically incorporated all the findings that we had discovered through discussion and site reviews and so on. So if you're interested in seeing the current state of the system, that baseline assessment document is what you'd want to look at. And then with that, we took, talked to the TRD staff, to Jamie and Jason, and talked about kind of the state of the system. And they provided some more feedback. So this is a real quick list of of the status of the system. So as Jamie mentioned, the system's been in place for over twenty years. And they're dispatching right now out of fire hall one through Kamloops Fire Dispatch. You're using VHF pagers, you're using VHF radios, which is very appropriate for your terrain here. Each department has two ways of being dispatched by by the dispatcher. We have a primary and secondary way of dispatching. So each department has two methods. So if the primary has a problem, technical problem, they can pivot to a secondary approach pretty seamlessly. So that today exists. The primary connections, again, if you remember that that map, you saw those red lines. There was, there's only a subset of all the departments that actually are connected through a TNRD owned and operated radio linking system. And the remainder again uses a public network for the primary connection. One of the concerns about public networks is that is the problem of outages. And if you have departments where they rely, their primary and secondary rely on forms of public, public networks, then there's a greater risk of not being able to communicate than if you have at least the primary connection being on your own linking system. So with the secondary connections, all of them are through public networks. So it's either a phone line or satellite based connection. As as far as radio coverage for each different fire protection area, again, there's, so there's twenty seven fire departments and right now only seventeen fire departments are using a type of radio called a repeater. And all and the other ten are using what we call base stations. So any department that is using base stations and not a repeater, they basically handicap the portable radio users because the radio coverage is only as good as the the radio to radio coverage is. If you use a repeater, then that extends the range and that extends the ability for the fire departments to talk to crews and apparatus and the fire hall within their area. So that that that's a gap there. Now, the biggest finding in it is the the radio coverage. So with the NFPA standard, you're trying to achieve ninety five percent coverage ninety five percent of the time with portable radios when you're either on the ground or in a building. And that's generally the goal that NFPA specifies. And you'll see in a minute that there are not many fire protection areas that meet that target. And to not confuse the the coverage capability of portable radio, portable radio to portable radio communications. They use that type of communications when they're at an event, when they're at a house fire or MVA or something like that. The portable radios are talking directly to each other, so they don't rely on the repeater when they're all talking close together. It's more for when we're talking dispatch and when we're talking from a an event site to back to the fire hall or back, back to a vehicle. With the radio links, so those red lines that you saw in that diagram, all but one of them pretty much have obstacles in the way and they're basically mountains in the way. So the radio links, I think back when they put it together, there there were no, weren't many good choices for mountain top sites and that has grown since cell has come into the area more. And so those current radio links do suffer from a degrade in audio quality and also sometimes their ability to connect well. So that is a gap. And then I mentioned, of course, lack of extended coverage for road rescue areas. And finally, as Jamie mentioned, because the system's over twenty years old, there is some critical site equipment that is over twenty years old and it's time for them to be replaced. So generally speaking, these are the different areas that need attention. So we're talking about coverage again, both fire protection and road rescue and those radio links. There's areas within the fire departments where even though the regional district isn't responsible for the user radios at each fire department, there are areas that we noticed need improvement. So I will mention those and that you can bring that back to your fire chiefs. Then with that linking system, again, those red lines from mountain top to mountain top, there is a couple of things that are missing that would make the system more in keeping with the industry standards for resiliency and also being able to monitor that system. So right now it's not being monitored. And then the final part is how the TNRD manages the system. And as Jamie mentioned, the his staff does several things to manage the system, but there are some many technical things that they don't do that would be wise, in my opinion, for the TNRD to find the capacity to do. And I'll talk about these points very quickly. So as far as radio coverage within fire protection areas, this is a a list of all the fire departments. And what we did is we we did a coverage prediction model and we sent out these maps to the chiefs and asked them, are we close or not? And and to the right, you'll see who responded, but generally many, over half responded and they basically concurred with our maps. So as you can see, the of the twenty seven departments, only four I would consider are kind of closer on on the mark for the NFPA guidelines for coverage. Again, ninety five percent or better, ninety five percent of the time. And you can see many of the departments from a communications from portable on the ground back to dispatch, so back to whatever radio picks up their signal. The coverage is anywhere from, you know, on paper, not non-existent to, you know, maybe seventy five percent. So you can see that coverage is just a huge problem with with the system. So you're probably wondering, how do they operate now? And if you're in an area where your your portable radio can't communicate with dispatch, they would likely go to their vehicle and use their mobile radio, which has a lot more power and a better antenna to talk to dispatch. And then there's a lot of cases where they just have to move the vehicle. They have to, they have to either have a relay vehicle or they have to move the vehicle so that they can find a spot where they can communicate. And as you can imagine, this is a a safety risk and it also, you know, definitely hampers the ability to respond effectively. And also there's a column there that indicates what departments use repeaters right now and which ones use base stations. So again, we'd like to see that column just say all repeaters on there and that would help with their coverage between their units. One of the ones I wanted to point out was is merit. So merit being the, you know, the highest population in in these regional district fire departments. And the coverage is is just not good. And and there's technical reasons why it's not good. And we do have a proposed solution that would would fix that problem. So what, why do repeaters not provide the coverage in in your particular scenarios? And and basically, it's any one of these things. It's the repeater's in the wrong spot. It's not high enough. It's not central enough. It's too far away from the area you want to cover. In some cases, there's some technical choices that are not the best. So antenna types and so on. And so at the end of the day, a lot of this communications is relying on the radios, radio transmissions reflecting off opposing mountains. And that is something you don't want to bank on. And it's definitely not designed for in building coverage. So twenty years ago, the NFPA standard was a lot less more specific. And as the years, since then, the NFPA standard has been evolving and it's become more stringent and and that's probably an explanation of why you have a gap as well. So with the radio coverage issue, the proposed solution is basically to, first of all, upgrade any base radios to repeaters. That's a, that's an easy fix. It costs money, but that's an easy fix. But the the hard one is relocating repeaters to more strategic locations. And as you'll see in the summary, there's a lot of that proposed because it's, you have to find that that really good location for each fire protection area to get the best possible coverage. There's no point putting a repeater in a fire hall when the location of the fire hall is just not good for the area. Very with the radio links, I mentioned the fact that we have some obstructions due to the mountain tops. There's some other technical reasons, things like icing and so on, that that hasn't you know, doesn't allow the radio links to be as reliable as they should be. The other problem is that since the the radio interface point is at the Kamloops Fire Hall, if you can imagine that location, it's not very high up. And so it's hard to get good links from that location. So what we're proposing to fix these is is to pick more strategic linking locations so that you minimize the obstructions. We add more links for areas that aren't connected right now with radio. And then we move that that interface point to dispatch from the fire hall at Kamloops Fire Hall one up to a cell tower that we have identified in the Aberdeen area. And that particular tower does see, does span out to all the different areas quite nicely. So the current systems to the left, the, and I showed that that diagram before, what the proposed system would look like is to the right. So as you can see that we filled in a lot of the areas with these links. So there's a construction that would be required and getting on different mountain tops. The, there are four fire halls right now, Litten, Spences Bridge, Clinton and Blue River, where it's just so far and so much work to get dedicated links that we, until their call volumes increase, we were suggesting using a form of public network connection for those areas. But we'd like to stay away from that approach, but in this in these four cases, it might be the sensible thing to do. Okay, with road rescue, again, we we don't have coverage on a lot of the road rescue areas tied to that oddly enough is if you can solve the road rescue issue for coverage, you do help out the EOC operations in that it'll give them a platform to connect to fire departments at any area within their region without having to use the dispatch system. So the EOC personnel would not be able to use the dispatch system to talk between fire departments. That's what this EOC or this road rescue capacity would give them as well. So what we're proposing is that you look at, you know, one of a few forms of satellite communications so that they could talk wherever they are in their road rescue areas back to dispatch through a satellite based system. The two that we've identified, and there's a few more, but the two that are traditionally good are Iridium and Starlink. And we would encourage fire departments that do have road rescue responsibilities to trial one or both of these to see how well they work for them and then make a decision to to incorporate it in their operations. I just should point out too, with the road rescue requirements, that is really a provincial, provincially paid for call out service. The the common, the overlap for the regional district is that it's the fire departments that respond to it. So the fire departments of the regional district and they dispatch to Kamloops Fire. So it's, it's got a parallel requirement to your fire dispatch, but it is something that is not a regional district responsibility per se. But we thought we'd mentioned that gap. So all overall, to change a system from what you have to where we believe it should be, there's quite a, quite a change in the infrastructure to get that coverage and get the proper linking. And the highlights here is, is, you know, basically converting, you know, seventeen, going from seventeen sites with repeaters up to twenty seven, going from eight radio links that you have right now up to nineteen to connect to everyone so that their primary link is radio. The number of towers you use right now is nine, but in order to get the coverage, we have to be on, you know, good locations and likely on a tower. And what we've identified is towers, existing cell towers. So we'd be going from the using nine towers in your system to twenty two towers, and that is a huge effort. So right now you don't use any cell tower, cell towers in co-location, but we've identified ten towers that would help. So you'd be co-locating on ten cell towers. And then the final point there is we'd be proposing to move the radio interface point from the fire hall at Kamloops Fire One to that tower up in Aberdeen. So that in a nutshell is the transition that required and it's it's not trivial because of the scale of your area and the terrain and also just the sheer number of departments you have. So it's, it's a, it's a big transition. So I'll quickly talk about the system redundancy part. Right now, if you had a problem at one of those mountain top sites and the equipment failed and you're in the winter seasons or there's wildfire activity and you couldn't get to those sites, if that equipment fails, it affects everyone down the chain. The proposed solution is to basically double up on that equipment and provide an automatic or a manually, like a remote way to transfer the operations from one set of equipment to another. And that's not unusual for hard to access sites. The other part of your system is to be able to monitor it. So right now, fire dispatch does tests on a frequent basis to all the fire departments. Some are on a weekly basis, some are every two weeks, some are every, every month. And for, and also, of course, when there actually is an event, they're, they're, they're using the system. So in between all those times, if there's a system failure, no one will know it. And then they will know it when they go to try and use it. And if they try to use the system and when I say one of those mountain tops is down and they don't know it, it causes confusion and it certainly causes a lot of delay for dispatch. And from that, you get a delay to helping the person in need and you're also potentially creating a personnel safety issue. So the proposal is to put a form of automatic site monitoring at these sites that is connected to the cell system. So if a site has a problem and has to send out an alarm, they send it out to multiple people at the same time. So dispatch, the fire department that's involved, the TNRD staff and probably the radio contractor that's managing the system. And so they all know very quickly that there is an issue at a site. And from that, they can use some operational procedure to get around that problem. And they don't, they don't find about, find out about it too late. And then the last part here is system management. So what we're proposing is that the regional district review their internal abilities, their technical abilities to to manage this system, not to build it or to basically adjust it, but basically be able to really understand what the system is and how to make changes. So if if any of their contractors change or if there's a, just a set of circumstances where they're kind of left on their own, that the regional district can carry on and roll with it and and figure out how to go to the next step. Right now, you're heavily reliant on a single radio contractor and you 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 need them for everything. And I'll just quickly touch on the user radio issue. So this is the And I'll just quickly touch on the user radio issue. So this is the uh this is not a problem for the regional district, but this is something the director should take back to their fire chiefs and have a discussion about. Um, and they have to do with standards. Uh, right now, when fire departments go out and buy radios and pagers, they they basically um have to rely on the uh the reseller of the radios to tell them what they need. And there's no standard set by the regional district for um what the radio should be and what what cap- capacity capabilities it should have and what's what grade of radio. And um so what we're proposing is that the regional district um develop and enforce uh a specification for the fire departments to meet and maintain. So that when they go out to buy their radios, um they just don't go and buy something. They have to look through a a spec and check off all the key points before they buy these radios. Um, and the next point is also in relation to the radios themselves, and that is the maintenance of it. The fire departments tend to not do uh planned maintenance, so they don't send out radios every year or two years to get them checked. They only get them sent out when they fail. And of course, that's not a good thing. So just like the purchasing technical spec, um we're proposing that the regional district develop a radio maintenance standard. So that is something that all fire departments have to meet or achieve and meet. Um, and why this is important um for the dispatcher's side is that when you have a contract with a dispatch contractor, they're expecting that the whole system that they're they're um talking on is sufficiently built and works well. And if there are areas like coverage, if the coverage is not good, or if the radios themselves are not performing well, that adds stress and confusion and risk to the dispatcher uh dispatcher's ability to do their job well. And so the dispatchers have a responsibility to have their system um working and designed properly. The regional district and their fire departments have that responsibility to make sure they're a part of the system works well. And so we need to to see some standards there so that um so that everyone's assured that this will happen. Okay, and finally, the to roll this all up in cost, as you can see, um it's it's not a small amount of money. Um, and uh because of the scale of this uh your territory and the number of fire departments uh and the fact that it's mountainous, uh it's a very uh it's a very slow, methodical build that has to occur so that the current system can stay operating while you're changing the system. So it's a multi-year endeavor. Um, my my um suggestion is it's probably a four-year effort. Um, it could be shorter, it could be longer. If budget's required to be longer, it could be longer, but it's not a one-year activity. It would just on the planning alone, probably take twelve to eighteen months just to plan it. Um, so these are numbers that um we put together. Uh, we added um an inflation factor to it. If you know, obviously, every anything that's a multi-year project, um you're going to be um cost possibly experiencing inflation uh on the cost of stuff. And we definitely have seen the cost of this equipment go up over the last few years. Um, so the column to the left is what we predict would be your yearly, or sorry, not yearly, but your phase cost. So four phases there. And on the right is um the additional costs per year. Um, the sort of operational costs on top of what you're spending now. Those operational costs would be things like uh co-location fees that you'd pay to be on towers, uh networking charges and um new new radio spectrum licensing charges from Industry Canada. So yeah, you've got a big system here. So you know, the number's not small. And then the final point is at the bottom where you should have a a pot of money available so that uh you can maintain a system on a yearly basis. And also, if you have any equipment failures, um that you have money available and that it can be addressed quickly. Right now, um I the amount of spares we have, I think, is almost zero. And you're really relying on the radio contractor to have something in their shop available in case one of your um one of the pieces of your system goes down. And I I think that's a a very risky um arrangement. Uh, so that is uh generally what I think the cost will be. Um, so I will end with that, and I guess I will take your questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that very comprehensive, very frightening presentation. Uh, sorry. I have Director Stamer, Director Sau, Director Grenier, Director, okay, hang on. All right, in the order I saw you got Stamer, Sau, Grenier, Newstater, Director Houghton. This side of the room, you're severely outnumbered. All right, Morris, thank you. All right, so Director Stamer, you go ahead.
Um, thanks very much, Madam Chair. Thanks very much, Maury. I think many of us in the room are very familiar with the system that we have. Um, I remember having repeater systems thirty years ago when we were working up in Harbor Lake and using it for back and forth in the phone patch. So I've seen I've seen it all on that end of things, but you know, a couple of points I'd like to make. Um, first up is that in this room, I think we understand our responsibilities with the volunteer fire departments that we have. And we also understand the responsibilities that we are now assuming when we're doing these road rescues. And you know, we keep talking about the provincial government's involvement in these kinds of things. They should be paying for these upgrades. It shouldn't be us. It's one thing to be talking about the ongoing uh maintenance costs and operating costs. But I mean, this technology is old. I mean, there's an expectation that these road rescues are going to be there on our major routes on Highway One, five ninety-seven, including all their other side roads. And then all of a sudden, now they want to put a bunch of more responsibilities on all of us. And we're putting this on the backbones of our local residents when the provincial government should be paying for this. You know, when we when we have the EMRC Climate Ready Readiness Program to be able to pay us to go out there on the on the road, we don't have the ability to say, okay, now we got to come up with two or three million bucks. Uh, we're going to start charging you more because they tell us what they will actually pay us, and that's it. So it's almost like we're to the point in some of these cases saying, you know what? We're not going to do road rescue anymore. We're just going to do volunteer firefighting because that's what we originally set up until you guys figure it out that we should be getting more money from the provincial government on this side, I think. Because it's really not fair to us in this room to have to turn around and and rejig our whole nine-one-one system because a lot of it is being used on road rescue. And we're not getting paid for what it actually costs us to go out there and do it. So thanks very much for all the hard work you've done, Maury. My only other question I had for you is that when you talked about, you know, the ability of interchanging and and things like that. On these new towers, are they all going to be strictly um solar-powered battery? Like, is there like when you talked about redundancy? What kind of backup systems do we have? So if we do have a fire season and we don't have any electricity and those kinds of things, what are you going to be using for backup?
Okay, thanks for that question. Um what we try to do is we strive to find sites that are, first of all, they are located in the right spot. And then we also, it would be a bonus if they're powered with with uh the normal A C power. And most of these sites that um all the all the cell sites that uh Telus has in the area are all primarily um powered by the the main power system. All the um the NFPA guidelines and most designs of telecommunications systems have uh battery backup in the sites as well. So if you lose uh A C power, then you have battery backup um uh to fall back on. And you have that now. And uh eh as an example, if you were go up, go up to any of the sites that you have, and I got to applaud Kamloops Communications for this. They've really kind of over, uh I would say overengineer, not overengineer, but overstuffed batteries in the site so that if they can't get to the site for a long periods of time, as in weeks, that those sites keep operating. And that would, of course, be the practice going forward.
Thank you, Director Sau.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Maury, for the presentation. Um, uh, can you let us know um what your opinion on ham radios and maybe a bit of explanation behind those? And the usefulness and potential for being incorporated into the system? Um, I've been reached out by the Clearwater Ham Radio Operators Club uh for discretionary grant earlier this year uh for equipment for a new repeater tower for them. Um, and uh, you know, along with some advocacy requests for keeping for service roads um open for tower maintenance. Um, I was told that during power outages in two thousand and three with the fire up in Barrier there, um it'll the ham radio operator club allowed communication with Kamloops on a medevac medevac uh request. Um, because all of their equipment, I was told, they're off-grid pass uh power sourced. Um, and can ham radio uh 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 club volunteers be incorporated for those uh site maintenance dialogue? Thanks.
Okay, yes, thanks for that uh question. Uh, as an example, the Sunshine Coast Regional District incorporates um ham radio, the ham radio club in the area as a formal part of their um um emergency response plan. So the ham radios themselves would not be part of what obviously the fire personnel uses when they they're at an event. But if you have uh certain types of events, uh you know, um large-scale uh uh weather issues or fiery issues, um fire departments and regional districts can lean on and should lean on ham radio operators um to provide communications for essentially residents in the area. So if if, for instance, the phone systems are down, cell systems are down in Sunshine Coast, a ham radio operators and they're known where they live, they put out um boards at the end of their driveway that that identify that a ham radio operator is located there. And if someone in the area has an issue, while the the phone lines are down or whatever, they can walk to that house. And from there, the ham radio operator will communicate with the E O C um to pass on that information. So they they have a role to play. And I would I would encourage regional district to um you know, maybe perhaps create a program or some kind of arrangement with these uh ham radio operators. So it's a bit more formal and um they they are very valuable for sure.
Thank you. Uh, Director Grenier.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Maury, thank you. I'm just wondering, uh you've touched on police, fire and ambulance, and this, I guess, was initiated because of our fire departments. I'm wondering about SAR, uh uh search and rescue. I'm wondering about uh B C Wildfire Service. And then the other part is uh we have vast areas that don't have internet. And since a lot of this is cell phone, cell towers that you're utilizing, I'm wondering if the opportunity, uh if we were to put up cell towers, whether we could lease back to some of these places uh like Telus and Rogers Shaw to recoup some of the costs while at the same time achieving our fire protection and maybe ex- extending to search and rescue. So that's a lot I just raised. Could you comment on any of that? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for the question. The 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 budgets that I put out there um don't include the building of any towers because the the construction of a tower, certainly in your area, you're looking at, I would say, somewhere between three hundred and six hundred thousand dollars just to establish a site and put a tower up. So we've we've in our in our um plan, we've uh avoided the need to build towers. Uh, if you were in a situation where um you you know, there's no cell tower there and you, if you put one there, it greatly helps your fire department. Um, uh, yeah, you can talk to uh the um the different telephone companies that have cell uh operations to see what their interest in. We just, for instance, we just did one in Robert's Creek and the Sunshine Coast where Telus approached uh the regional district to put in a tower. And of course, um there was um an arrangement where they could put the tower on the site. The um which greatly helped the fire department because it was a taller tower. And then the fire department can put on their equipment. Uh, it turned out to be at a basically at no cost. And then we were able to work with the re- uh with Telus on other towers that we can use. So the what we what we did there was we we improved the radio coverage for those fire departments on the Sunshine Coast without really building a tower. Um, so um in, yeah, I'm just trying to recall in all the areas that we looked at, I I there there is one area, Barrier was one area where we just um it's such a tough area to cover because there's a um a small mountain, I'll call it in the middle of Barrier. And there is a spot right on top that would be perfect for a tower, but um that would be an area, that would be one area where I would say would might be a good opportunity for both the cell company and the fire departments to work together on um putting a a a location there. I think it would help them and it would help their fire. Oh.
Thank you for that, Maury. And uh just supplement supplemental to that, there's a big uh uh service gap uh between uh the Clinton Seventy Mile House Valley and the uh the North Valley, McClure Valley, uh the Chris Creek area and north of Kamloops Lake. And I'm just wondering if there was a tower established somewhere up that Tronkyl Chris Creek Road, whether it might be useful in um uh transmitting from Kamloops up to Seventy Mile. I know that you're you're piggybacking on a lot of systems, but if we were able to uh build a tower somewhere up that Dead Man Creek Road, um, would that be a useful part of what you've proposed i- if that was opport- an opportunity?
I would I would have to take a look at that particular location to figure out if it if there's an advantage to that area. You got to remember that um we're trying to, when we're linking areas back to dispatch, we have to stay up high so we don't we don't try to um radiate into the tops of mountains. So that location would have to be um like a strategic spot that can hit um part of the chain of links that get back to Kamloops Fire. But if it doesn't, and if there's a need to put a tower there to help with coverage, um that might be um a different reason to do it. So it may not have a direct connection back to Kamloops, but it might it might come into the fold of the whole linking design and and help out with that coverage. So um, yeah, there's uh uh T N R D is a a vast area. And it's just like uh like Jamie said at the beginning, uh B C is so difficult for radio. And it you seem like you're building a lot for a small operation, but you really just don't have a choice, really.
Thank you, Director Stamer. You have some information on this?
Uh, no, I just wanted to ask a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to ask a question. Maury, um are we still using the same uh frequencies? Because we know the old frequencies go a lot further than the new frequencies. Are we still going to be able to continue to use those old uh frequencies? And the second part is uh with the search and rescues, where does that lie when we start looking at upgrades? Um, and maybe staff can answer this. How do we try to collectively make sure that they're in the same boat, even though we only partially fund, you know, some of the search and rescue operations in the T N R D? How do we make sure that we're all singing from the same page? Because we're utilizing those same towers and and communication system with them as well, aren't we?
Uh, to be honest with you, I didn't investigate the search and rescue um role because that's that wasn't really a regional district. That wasn't part of the the scope that I was um asked to look at. But my experience is that in search and rescue departments tend to be autonomous to the fire departments. Uh, and there are areas where um search and rescue and fire departments use same towers for sure, but search and rescue is a different there are different type of organization. Their need for coverage usually is in the backwoods or way out there. So there they usually have um locations that fire departments wouldn't need. Um, it was more for search and rescue. Um one of, you know, one of the uh mountaintops that we've identified is um uh was a Blackpool Mountain. And that's a very dominant mountain. If you're to drive up there, you'd see a lot of um industry up there, you know, the the gas pipelines and uh R C and P and their and rail and so on up there. And uh that would be a good area, I think, for search and rescue to be up there if they're not there already. My suggestion for this is that um uh is to have dialogue with search and rescue groups and see where their gaps are and see if the locations they have would be of any help to, say, road rescue and vice versa, if we have any locations that would help them. Um, so.
And so we're in on the frequency. Are we still going to be able to use the old?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so right now you're using V H F frequencies and we wouldn't change that. Um, we, you know, the going up to higher frequencies like they do in the cities, there is advantage to that. But in the in the terrain that you're in, we have to stick to V H F um for sure.
Thank you. I have Directors Nystater, Houghton and Morris.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I have three questions, one for Mr. Kepstanik. I hope I said that right. As one person with a lot of unnecessary vowels to another. And then uh And then uh one question for staff as well. So maybe I'll start with the staff question. Um I I too am curious about the funding and our responsibility, just to build off of what Director Stamer was saying. I'm curious if staff can tell us whether conversations will happen between now and we're receiving initial information. And when it actually comes back to us for decision making, whether there may be some funding opportunity to fill that gap with the province.
Sure, okay. Through the chair, um yes, the answer is that we would uh explore. If we come, when when we come back to this board with sort of a plan of what the operational action plan is, capital plan and where the money's coming from, we'll explore all. Avenue and bring that back. Um as I mentioned, there is in the report, we currently have some grant funding that's allocated to both municipalities and the regional district. Under the N G nine one one. Um but we'll explore other opportunities as well.
Appreciate that. Um and then to Mr. Kepstanic, uh first question, um. Well, let's say first a comment. Thank you for that thorough report as well. As someone who worked in radio for many years, it seems sort of miraculous to me. As we use comparable equipment that we've gotten away with such a low standard of maintenance until now. And particularly in light of wildfires um and the risk that we're at with with the singular use system. So appreciate this coming forward when it is. Um I'm curious about an additional round of collaborative conversations with fire departments. Uh outside of the wildfire season, whether you feel that's necessarily necessary or whether their feedback was adequately captured.
Well, I um I have to admit that um. I was surprised that that, you know, the response rate from the fire department wasn't a hundred percent. Um I think I think there was, uh I I don't know the exact count, but I would say at least a quarter of the fire departments. Um for some reason, we're not able to um participate uh in in this. Um I think it was a busy time for them. Um so. Yeah, I mean, I'd be open to having those discussions with them. The the one thing about. This um this this topic of communications is that that you really have to have. A a mechanism for fire departments to be deeply involved in the evolution of this radio system. Mainly, part of it is educational for them so that they can learn really what the system can and can't do for them. But also in doing that, in in increasing their knowledge, they can better articulate what their problems are. And some of the fire departments definitely uh are very technical, radio literate, you know, in the way the responses I got. And some were. Uh it was more anecdotal and it was all very helpful. But I would definitely, what we did in the Regional District of Okanagan and Sumalkamine is uh one of the recommendations was to set up a committee. Of all the fire departments uh for the purposes of this communication system evolution. And in that particular area, there's three kind of geographic zones. And so the recommendation I made was, you know, create three. Mem- uh three representatives, one for each zone, and create this communications committee so that they could be um. Part of the whole process of not only um upgrading the system, but to also as, you know. Going forward, there are representatives that um the Regional District could go to and they would represent the communications. Um story. And so now, ten years later, I I I had an opportunity just recently to. Redo the review of their system. And immediately you can tell how organized they were with the fire departments. They all, they had a representative. They were, they knew, they understood the technology, they knew what they needed to ask for, and it was very, very efficient. And it was, it was a joy. To see that. So that's a recommendation I would make is to explore some kind of uh committee. Um for your fire departments.
That makes sense to me and probably serves a a dual purpose of increasing communication anyway between uh those departments. Thanks for that answer. And my second question is just around the comments you made about moving away from a single contractor dependency. I'm just unclear who would be responsible for daily operations of a new and more complex system then? How how does that work?
That is um is something that uh. Obviously, is something the the um management in the Regional District would have to uh work out. The the important thing is, so the point I I I was making, and I'll just reiterate it, is that. If you no longer had access to your current um service provider that maintains and and can it watches out for you. If of that no longer existed, um I think you, I think there would be um a lot of work trying to. You know, uh if if you had a problem in the meantime, I think you would really be in in trouble. And I think that for the Regional District to um up its game as far as technically internally. Knowing what the system is and how it works, and for them to be able to pivot to another. Um you know, if they had to get other help or or a different type of help, that they they are well versed in the system. They are, I mean, they are well versed operationally, but technically being able to say this is exactly what we need over here or over there. That doesn't exist. And the uh and other regional districts have had to evolve in that way. And normally, they've evolved, um they've incorporated their I T departments because they are, they are technically capable. Um departments, they understand what systems mean and they understand what it means to deal with contractors. And so generally, I think they end up being where this responsibility lies. And I'm not saying that's. What you should do when you're a regional district, but generally, they seem to be the most capable department to help. Uh someone like Jason on the technical side of things.
So just supplemental, if I can, then Chair, just for clarity to make sure I understand, we should also be considering the fact that this will increase staff capacity in some combination. With a contractor that would be used. Am I correct in that?
Yes, Maury, I'll jump in on that. Yeah, to to be, uh you know, very blunt to what Maury was was saying is we don't have the staff. Capacity or ability to uh to maintain the system. Currently, we're a hundred percent reliable on our contractor. So one of the recommendations, the identify that we have that um at least some capacity and expertise in-house to be able to address those issues. Because it's a vulnerability, being a hundred percent reliant on our contractor.
So we should also be considering an additional cost that would be related to staff training and possibly an increase in body count?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just just to add on to that, um cognizant that, of course, our fire departments in most of the regional district are volunteers. Not amateurs in any sense of the word, but volunteers. So that might be one of the reasons why there was not a one hundred percent take up. And report back from the fire departments because people are working jobs that pay the bills. Um and I'm just listening to this about setting up a committee and thinking about the work, for example, with standards for radios. I can see the various fire departments within the regional district asking the T N R D for assistance with this because I think it is. It is very difficult as it stands to recruit people to our volunteer fire departments. And by loading more and more of this very technical. Very time consuming work onto their shoulders. I think it's going to be harder to recruit people to our volunteer fire departments. And I think that. In that case, uh it's going to be essential for the T N R D, especially if each municipality hands back the forty five thousand dollars that we're getting from. The province for them to then say to the T N R D, we need technical support from you to help us with these things because we can't do it on our own. I have Director Houghton, Director Morris and Director O'Connor. Just a reminder, we have two more items to get through. And then we have the uh long service appreciation lunch uh to follow this at what time C A O Hildebrand?
Twelve thirty.
At twelve thirty. All right. Thank you. So Director Houghton.
Yeah, I'll make this quick. It's probably echoing, uh thank you, Madam Chair, echoing Director Grenier sentiments about. The lack of service up in that Tronkyl Valley and up to Seventy Mile. I'll echo the same thing from. Basically, the boundary of the city of Kamloops to the city of Merritt down five A. We have a lot of vehicular traffic, a lot of heavy truck traffic. We have accidents that happen and it seems like that whole stretch is no man's land. And whether it be cell towers or whatever we need. We need, we need some help in that whole corridor. And I know there's other areas, but I think we found that out during the Rossmore Lake Fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Director Morris.
Uh thank you, Chair. And I'll be uh fairly brief. I think it's more of the long term um. Uh questions that I have and 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 Director Nystader has already addressed a couple of them as well as some others. Very, very simply, just an understanding a system uh that we currently have. I assume there's um some shelf life. Not left in some pieces of that. Um and what um to Maury. Um the first question would be life expectancy, for example. Nice border, Colleen. Sorry. Um life expectancy um on as we implement, we have to implement and replace. Systems. Are we looking at twenty year amortizations of of over those kinds of things? The second question is truly long term. I guess is as, and I look at our area P, just using it as an example, as um population density. Um increases and 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 the size of a lot of our semi rural communities, not really even the rural ones. Is changing. Are we building that infrastructure into this twenty year strategy that says where do we need to be? Uh on that. So I can leave that for another timeframe and simply leave that, you know, intriguing question on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Director O'Connor.
Thank you. I just uh would like to clarify. Did I hear that um? Spences Bridge and Litton areas are not being considered in these um upgrades because of. Um low call out numbers or is it more geography and lack of cell towers and those kinds of things? And I'm just wondering, you know, uh as Litton rebuilds our fire hall, um. We have infrastructure money to do that. And this would be a great opportunity to to improve the radio communication. Infrastructure. Um yeah. And then uh then the other question is around long term planning. You know, is is this something considered? In a longer term plan to include those areas. Thank you.
Okay. So thanks for that question. Yeah, I know the um I'll I'll add some clarification to what I said. All the regions, if you remember that 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 chart that showed the twenty seven departments and their radio coverage. Um that they they have right now. Litton and Spences Bridge and all other departments definitely need help with their coverage. So the the um proposed plan and the cost incorporate improving coverage for all areas. Where it's tough to help Litton and Spences Bridge and Clinton and Blue River. Is is that there's no existing mountaintop sites that can eventually link those areas back to. Um Kamloops. It's, that's the problem. So the so the coverage improvements are incorporated in the proposal. Uh but we can't find a kind of off the shelf way of linking back like we can the other areas. So for now, we're suggesting using a public network to connect your regions to the dispatch center. If in the future, there is a way of connecting using uh radio links to, say, Litton and Spences Bridge. Then um I would definitely encourage that. But right now, there's no off the shelf, ready to go sites that would help us get to your region. As you can imagine, if you drive from Kamloops all the way to uh, say, Litton or Spences Bridge, you're going through a lot of corridors and a lot of. You know, um valleys. And for radio, that's really tough to get around. And we haven't found that was. So if there is a location that we haven't found, then we would use it. But um that's really what I meant.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Maury or for Mr. Viera? Mr. Tomlin, sitting there patiently. No more questions. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. You've given us all a lot to think about.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move on to item four point three, which is the T N R D's Parks and Trails Strategy. And Mr. Viera, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair. Uh we'll be turning it over to uh Kevin Skrapnik, our manager of Community Emergency Services, to speak about this more as he works his way out here. Just um kind of remind the board that this was a committee of the whole discussion in the June meeting. It was just a verbal presentation to sort of. Discuss the concept and gather interest from this committee on whether or not this is even a direction the board wanted to go down. At that point, um the the direction was to come back with a more uh formal report with a recommendation, which is what you have before you here. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Skrapnik.
Uh good morning to members of the committee here. So. As Jamie mentioned, uh this was a a a matter we had brought to committee the whole in uh June of this year. Uh just sort of with the concept of uh of moving forward with a with a park strategy. Um so what we have here uh in the report uh does come with recommendation. We'll uh we'll touch on that uh. Uh towards the end here. Um we've got a a presentation that'll come up in a second here, but. Uh basically, just to provide a bit of uh a refresher on the current state of uh of our parks inventory. Uh and then uh a bit more around the concept that uh we are hoping to get uh the board's endorsement for today. Um and yeah, cognizant, obviously, uh busy uh busy schedule this morning and and this afternoon with hospital board. Uh so we we won't uh rehash too much of uh what's already in the report and what was discussed in June, but just to refresh everybody's memory. Now, uh before we dive in though, uh I do just want to take a moment to uh uh recognize uh uh Sherry Madden. Uh who uh not only was uh the lead on this initiative uh in terms of the report and the presentation, but uh. Has certainly been the uh, you know, the torchbearer for parks in this organization for for some time. Uh and uh her her passion, her dedication have really contributed to where we're at, particularly, I think Directors. Onslow and Sao can uh can speak to the uh the incredible parks infrastructure we have in the North Thompson right now. Uh and in fact, uh Sherry's receiving her fifteen year long service award uh this afternoon. Unfortunately, she won't be joining us today uh due to the inclement weather. But uh certainly, we wouldn't be where we are uh without all of uh Sherry's hard work. And of course, Mr. Mr. Kang as well. So quick background um of where we kind of currently sit here. So. We delineate our parks broadly. We've got electoral area parks. So these are ones that are funded uh at an electoral area service level. Uh we have a dozen of those right now. Um in some cases, it is a combination of multiple electoral areas. So Smith Pioneer Park. In Lower Nickel as an example, uh which is funded jointly by both areas, uh M and N. We have three regional parks uh that are funded by the uh the entire regional district. And again, we'll get into that a bit more in a so in a moment. Uh previously, we had what we refer to as specified area parks. So these were parks that were funded out of a specified area service. So not an entire electoral area. Uh but but only properties within a set boundary that we're paying into it. We've we've done away with that concept. Two other things we'll touch on, obviously, uh trail systems of which we uh have one up in Blue River. Um and then just the generally kind of undeveloped um subdivision parks uh that have been been handed over to us. Uh and in your report, on the last page, there is a full listing of uh of our fifteen current community and regional parks for reference. So of the twelve community parks, you'll see the vast majority, eight of the twelve are in areas A and B. Uh and this is largely. You know, a a a lingering uh impact of kind of the pre incorporation. Uh governance of the North Thompson. A lot of these areas were uh developed prior to Clearwater and Barrier incorporating in the mid two thousands. So that's why we have a bit of a bit of an imbalance in terms of where a lot of this is. And, you know, indeed, a reason why we want to start looking at this a bit more strategically. Um most of, uh well, it it's a it's a mix uh generally in terms of ownership. Uh in some cases, these are on lands that we own. Uh in others, there is a uh, you know, some sort of an agreement in place typically with the province. Uh licenses of occupation uh with different ministries depending on the nature of where these parks are located. And as I said, that's a bit of a mixed bag. So of the three parks that are uh regional parks, so paid for uh by uh by the entire uh regional district. Uh so we have Little Hell's Gate Regional Park. Uh for those unfamiliar, that's between of all and Blue River, just off the highway. And actually, the photo there is from the uh the viewing platform at Little Hell's Gate. Uh Barrier Forks Regional Park, uh which is primarily a cross country and horseback riding uh uh destination. Uh quite a beautiful area there. Um and then the uh the River Boy Network on the South Thompson and Thompson River is also uh paid for. Out of our regional parks service. And then for trail systems, uh we do have a a twenty seven and a half kilometer trail system uh in Blue River. Um this is uh on a license of occupation and then also part of this. This is on a license of occupation, and then also part of this is through a partnership agreement with ourselves, Mike Wiggly Helicopter Skiing and Rec Sites and Trails BC. And we'll we'll talk a bit a bit more about this system in a in a moment here. And I do know, I think Director Lepso, when we get into the kind of questions and comments, Director Lepso and I attended the Shushwap Trails Alliance meeting a few weeks ago, and I think he's got some input to pass along from that on what this could look like for TNRD going forward and some of the other areas where we've seen success. And then a big piece that, you know, we would really like to, that we think would benefit from what we've got recommended here is is getting a better grasp and inventory of these undeveloped subdivision parks. So these are the areas that have basically been handed over to us as a result of subdivisions going through. Not not completely surprisingly, these are often not the most desirable pieces of land, given that obviously the developer was going to take most of it for actually being developed and sold off. So in a lot of cases, these are completely inaccessible or really undegradable pieces of property that we now kind of are holding on to. And obviously, part of what we want to look at is what should be done with these going forward. So why create a parks and trail strategy? So, you know, as I've kind of alluded to, a lot of what we've been doing up until this point has been quite ad hoc. There hasn't really been a governing, you know, direction in terms of how we do this. As I said, a lot of our existing parks and infrastructure in this area are carrying over from from the North Thompson prior to the incorporation of the two districts. This kind of leaves, you know, quite frankly, a bit of competition, you know, depending on what directors are kind of keen and taking initiative, putting in proposals, things like that. We don't really have like a board-level strategy on what this should look like. So first and foremost, getting that together, having these priorities agreed upon. And then our vision would that be that this is a 10-year plan. This would kind of give us a better picture of how we need to allocate resources and planning and and funding going forward. So once we have this strategy together, if if the board chooses to go that way, we would be able to really kind of plan for what that needs to look like in terms of how we're going to actually deliver that service. And I think, you know, not insignificantly is the the fact that this could unlock a lot of other funding opportunities by having this plan in place. And on on page five of your report, you know, there's an example there with respect to our Blue River's Trails and Active Transportation Management Plan. So, you know, we did spend $35,000 to put that plan together. And to put it in context, that plan only covers seven kilometers of that 27 and a half kilometer trail network. So just from a costing perspective. So not not insignificant, but the, as a result of that, by having this kind of plan ready, you know, shovel-ready, if you will, on the shelf, ready to go, we were able to secure over $140,000 in destination development grants to implement some of the Blue River Trails Network project. And that's going to be completed in March of, anticipated to be completed in March of 2025. So by having this strategy in place, you know, there's a lot of benefits, but certainly being able to unlock some of that grant funding is a considerable one. So what would this strategy look like? So as I mentioned, you know, evaluate our our existing assets, particularly with these undeveloped parks. What are some of the opportunities there? What could we be doing differently? Or indeed, is this an opportunity for us to just liquidate some of those assets, given that they're really not going to be, in some cases, particularly useful as as parks? Looking at our designation, so as I said, we've got the two different streams in terms of community versus regional. You know, does does that make sense going forward? Are there parks currently that are community parks that should be regional? Are there regional parks that we have now that should be community parks? There's pretty compelling arguments to be made for for that on both sides with a few of our our current ones. So having a plan to to look at that and guide us a bit. Opportunities, again, for future development. This would be part and parcel of some of the public consultation we'd be looking to have. Again, inventorying our current assets, prioritization, looking at also not only at our own parks, but what member municipalities currently are are doing, if there's opportunities for partnership there. First Nations and as well as provincial assets as well from BC Parks and Rec Sites and Trails. And then also looking at opportunities for grants and aid to support existing groups that are already looking after some of these parks that are out on the land. So the benefits, oh, we've already kind of spoke to some of this, but, you know, we've, unless we've had an individual project, we haven't done a a whole lot of broad engagement with with residents and others during the planning and implementation. So that would be part of what we're envisioning here. Obviously, just kind of supporting recreation, quality of life for residents. You know, we've spoken to it before. You know, we see parks, even though we kind of look at this from a rural perspective as, you know, being a lot land of, you know, wide open spaces. Parks do provide that really critical kind of third space. You know, it's not home, it's not work, but it's a place for building relationships, building connections with with each other, and that's that's certainly significant. Obviously, a a huge one is from the economic development perspective in terms of looking at these as developing them as potentially destinations and economic development tourism and the knock-on effects of that. You know, what is from utilization perspective? What's our best strategy in terms of staffing and funding for this going forward? And then just in generally that that long-term planning. I think a key part of this is just from the public perspective as well, as part of the engagement that would happen with this, understanding from the public, you know, what they see as some of the opportunities in their local areas and some of the potential partnerships that could come along with it. And again, just by having this, you know, as a board plan at the outset, setting some of the board's priorities on this, just reducing some of the one-off requests and the kind of the ad hoc approach we've had till now, less competition between EA's and resources because we would have this plan for the next 10 years, already established. So in terms of timeline and cost here, so should the board go ahead with this? Well, so there is a recommendation in front of you that we'll discuss, but this would be basically from Committee of the Whole to recommend that the board consider this in early 2024. We'd go to the request for proposal, the anticipated work would be this year and next. A board adoption of the strategy this summer and then the ongoing planning with kind of the eventual project to be delivered sometime in 2025, with it being fully finished at that point. And then kind of the ongoing adoption and work as a result of as a result of this going forward. In terms of costs, so for comparison, looking at what some other governments have done, you know, look at Comox Valley Regional District, Cathat Regional District, which is Powell River, and then Regional District of Niemo. So in terms of the cost of their plans, you know, not the recommendation we've got here is for 100,000, but obviously, to put it in perspective, we'll get Cathat as an example, 500,000 hectares compared to TNRD at 4.4 million. So the $100,000 price tag, I realize, is not insignificant, but when comparing it to other areas that have undertaken a similar process, does fall in line. And I guess what I'll add to, you know, it's in your report here, but we do have the $228,000 currently in the regional parks service reserve. So it's, that money is sitting in the reserve. It is service-based, so it's not something that we can move out to use elsewhere. So to, you know, from staff's perspective, taking that 100,000 out of the reserve to go towards this strategy and understand how we could start approaching this differently going forward would be would be money well spent. So that that is it from us. As I said, there's a full listing in the report of the current inventory and a bit more info, and Jamie has a point here to add in.
And and just to add in and to close off, something I should have mentioned at the beginning. The reason we brought this forward initially was really this theme of kind of destination parks, destination trails came up during the strategic planning discussion. Both the strategic planning session we had, the week, I think we called it the pre-strategic planning session we had with the EA directors, and then it came up again at our strategic planning session at the board. And even most recently, we last month had a meeting with all the CAOs. And I know there's a lot of work being done within municipalities on trail development, and and the CAOs had mentioned a regional plan or strategy of how to kind of integrate that work would also be beneficial.
Thank you. Director Blackwell, do you have any, I think you might have your hand up, and Director Grenier? Director Sau?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, through to staff. Fully supportive of doing this. Clearwater itself has been in a similar position where we acquired so much land through subdivision versus taking cash that that we now actually have a policy that at first, if we do a subdivision, we take cash in lieu of land because we have all these orphaned chunks of of parkland. So two things that I would really like to see out of this report, and one I've already forgotten, but the first one is is an understanding of what risk we have on these developed undeveloped chunks of land that are declared parks. Do we have to manage them for things like hazard trees as if they are parks? And then the second process is is I would really like to see what the process is for disposing of them. Because I believe, depending on how they were gifted or given to the TNRD, there is an easy version, which is that to get rid of them and then a much harder process as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Grenier.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I was thinking about the Area J, and in the the slide presentation, we have a park in Savinaw, which is run by a community association. But I got to check here to give out tomorrow on the Christmas train to help take down some trees in that park. They need our assistance. They got some boat launch stuff. So we somehow want to integrate that community-based park. We've got Greenstone Mountain, which is a popular motorbike place. We've got Painted Bluff Park on the other side of Kamloops Lake, which anybody that walks there is just amazed at the topography. We have Lac de Bois. We have regularly people walking up on Battle Bluff and taking pictures and posting it on Facebook. And we have a a gal named Barb Gale who walks around Savinaw Trails and posts all the time. So it seems to me we've got a collection of different areas that we're not in control of. But somehow linking those or or overlapping these is going to provide a real wonderful experience for people coming in. So I'm kind of keen to get this going, but I think we have to broaden because I'm sure there are other areas that have got park-like things that they would want to integrate with with this initiative. So looking forward to talking about this.
And a comment on that through the chair. And I I 100% agree with the points that Director Grenier was making. And I think if you look at the Shushwap Trail Alliance, who, you know, they're 15 years ahead of us on this, but that's an example of, these aren't just regional district trails that are part of that trail alliance. This is, it's actually a separate governing body, but the regional district is heavily involved, and it integrates all the different trails that were existing, legitimizing trails. And that's, you know, to be blunt, as a trail user in this community, in the regional district, a lot of our trail systems are not legitimate or not authorized. So that would all be part of this, of how do we do that? You know, using your example of talking about posting photos on social media, and then often those trails don't even exist, or a traveler or a tourist couldn't find those because there's no map that indicates where they are. Because, you know, you got to jump a fence here and go around this road without a name here, and yeah.
Thanks. We we've just done a Trails Master Plan in Ashcroft, and one of the things that came up was was instead of having these things existing in isolation, how can you integrate them? I realize it's much harder to do in the TNRD than it is within the boundaries of the 14-square-kilometer village of Ashcroft. But we have that same issue with unauthorized trails. We've got a wonderful one right behind my house on Crown Land in TNRD Area I, the Anukchuk Trail and the Three Meadows Trail, which someone has physically built 535 steps up the side of the hill now, making it slightly easier to get up there. But we promote it, but how should we be promoting it? That's a question that we're we're dealing with in Ashcroft, is what liability do we have? How, you know, if we put signage up officially recognizing it because people are looking for it, what is the liability for the village of Ashcroft then in promoting this unauthorized trail? So I think a parks and trail strategy would help to answer a lot of these questions, which sadly are ones that we have to face. I have Director Sau, Director Stamer, and Director Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The way I see it, with this offering a potential benefit of creating more First Nation engagement on softer topics, can we ensure that there is a naming policy for the new parks that aligns with our strategic planning of First Nation relations?
Yep, yep, absolutely, and I think that's a, yeah, that's an excellent idea. And certainly, the Mr. Viera already alluded to it, but the the Shushwap Trail Alliance, huge, huge involvement from First Nations and and certainly the naming conventions, not only of the trails themselves, but just in terms of the day-to-day governance of the group and, you know, how the regions refer to things like that, very heavily vested in that case in terms of the the specific kind of input on it. So no, I think that would be a a key one. And certainly with, you know, with the Blue River Trails, where it's already happened so far, SIMC has been has been quite involved with that, particularly the interpretive side and and the naming side.
Director Stamer.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, just just to to add to what Director Sau or Director Yusov has mentioned. We're doing the same thing. I mean, we're trying to enhance our trail network both in and out of our boundaries. And we've had discussions with our SIMC First Nations partners and also to, you know, looking at other opportunities, even like with the Barrier Forks Park across the river. There's a piece of Lower North Thompson Committee Forest that had some new fuel mitigation opportunities in there. It's a great location. We've talked to the Committee Forest, and they'd love to be able to see if we can try to, you know, maybe link the two, maybe not necessarily a Sis Branson Bridge like the one in Blue River, but similar opportunities. So we're able to get, you know, more people to get out and have a look and see what what's actually going on, more enhancement of of trails and opportunities with bikes and hiking and all that kind of stuff. So this is a great idea, and I look forward to the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Smith.
You mentioned a a piece of property in the Loon Lake area, and I'm not sure where that piece of property is. But there is a, there is a decommissioned provincial park. And I'm wondering, do we have any opportunity to possibly deal with the provincial government on acquiring that property or or at least taking it over and and using it as a as a as a lake access park? Because there really isn't any public access to Loon Lake. It's all pretty well private property. There's one boat launch at the very end, which also, I I believe, is an opportunity to increase public access to the lake. So I'm just wondering, is is there an opportunity to deal with the government on the decommissioned provincial park?
I could take that one. Short answer is yes, we we pursue that opportunity. I'm familiar with that property, and it's right across the road from the fire hall that we just built there. I can't speak to how likely that opportunity is in the process, but those are the type of opportunities that would be identified in this plan. And that one, I know very well and 100% agree, that that's it it's the perfect opportunity in the sense that it already was designated as a park. And for, and I don't know the details of the reason, it was closed down as a provincial park, and now it's just sitting vacant. But that that, those are the exact examples that we could identify in the strategy and then prioritize what that looks like, how we actually get it done. I can't answer that yet, but great example.
Thank you.
Director Morris?
Oh, thank you, Chair. And very, very quickly, one, I'm very supportive of all of the conversations that we're having here, cognizant of cost in terms of what we do in the future, in terms of the park strategy, but certainly I'm supportive of that. Question one, there's just a, in the report, there's a $228,000 budget line item there. We're looking at utilizing 100,000 of that to develop the trail system concept. Is that correct, or the the strategy in terms of where we're going? That's good. Second question will be, keep in mind the liability issues. And here's where I'll use an example. We've got a spot in one part of Area P that the disc golf folks, as an example, are going to be expanding and a growing sport, of course. Discs flying creates liability. So just cognizant that we also need to, in that strategy, really pay attention to where, and I know you will within your lead, so my due diligence comment is pretty much. And the third thing I would just suggest in that strategy is that we look at integration with with the city of Kamloops Trail System because they have a pretty interesting network as well. And we could have that connectivity. I am wearing my Area P hat, I guess, here right now. But if you look at the Barnhart Vale Trail System as an example, and you look at how you can integrate that further into a TNRD system would be, would be useful to consider. And yeah, don't forget the Pritchard Beach. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Getz.
Yeah, we, we have some trails up in our area around Lumbly Lake and Kane Valley and Cody Creek. And what we've done there is we've connected with our DMO, our destination marketing organization, and they are working out a strategy with us to promote those kind of without being liable, I guess. So we, we use our DMO on that kind of stuff. So just thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you. Director Blackwell did have his hand up and then he took a phone call and vanished. So I'm not entirely sure if he'll be back in a timely manner. Does anyone else have any questions or comments in the meantime? Director Lepso.
Yeah, thanks. It was good getting everybody's comments. And as mentioned, the Village of Chase and the trail lines, we did, we did this 15 years ago. We were at the same, same level. So I'm happy everybody's heading this direction. I ended up getting involved. I'm just going to be short because I'm actually a trail steward for Skatchard. Every trail needs to have a champion. There's no use going ahead with a project if someone's not going to champion it. So that's how I got involved. And it sounds like the trail alliance probably come here and present or something. One time, what we've done is we've actually hired a contractor to do this for us. One of the biggest things we did was we, we, everybody that's involved, I think there's like 80 or 100 different groups and it's a different level of government, right? There's the Supepec, there's the developers, there's motorized people, there's everything, environmentalists. It's just a, it's an actual level of government that, that we've created. And the first thing we did was we, we would want to build a trail and the First Nations wouldn't answer back within the 90 days. And we'd go ahead and then all of a sudden there'd be problems. So everybody has signed on that belongs to this trail alliance that we recognize Supepec title and rights when it comes to trails. So we go to them first before we go to any other level of government. So that, and it's huge. Other parts is standard signage is great, like when I hike around here in Kamloops, it's, it's just. And for the liability that was brought up, right, at every intersection, there's a distance, you know, where you are, your elevation coordinates, every intersection has a sign so you can't get lost. We, Shuswak Tourism did these booklets and Summer Like This, it's the number one ask. I think they do like 30,000 a year or every two years. It's just crazy. And what the government's like is broad community support. So when you can show them, when you've got a group of 80 or 100 from everything working, we get grants. We don't have a problem getting grants. And so we have a working group that meets four times a year and then once a year, we, we have an overall meeting. So that's just a basic plan, but it's just working, works really good. So thank you.
Director Grenier.
How much money do you throw at this?
That's, that's kind of stuff I think we'll get staff to bring back, you know, and maybe have the trail alliance themselves come, come back in. There's, there's a lot of good funding. And, and the best thing about trails is when you build them, there's not a lot of maintenance because you have to have a trail champion like me who hikes up the trail and I maintain it. Yeah. So to get to the more technical stuff, I would suggest having the trail alliance come and do that. Like I think we put, we only put in, I think about, we put in about $2,000 a year. The village, just, that's just for operations and then the trails are on top. Squilac's actually got us a $70,000 grant to upgrade our trail into First Falls, 100% grant. Squilac's, to Supepeculu.
Thank you, Director Lepso. I have Director Grenier and Director Houghton.
Just to be quick, I agree with what we're trying to achieve here. Just word of caution that you, you work with all the stakeholders that are involved with the land, especially outside the perimeter of the city of Kamloops, especially your crown land. But then there's a lot of private land and I know we all like making trails and one of my neighboring ranches gets forced with that all the time. So just work with caution to work with all the stakeholders that have a, have a say in, in, in the crown land, including the First Nations. But just to make it smooth, I highly recommend that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Blackwell has not returned, so we do have a recommendation, which has not been moved or seconded yet.
So moved.
Seconded, Director Stamer, seconded by Vice Chair Smith. Any further discussion? On the question then, all those in favor, opposed if any, that is carried. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, just one note, just on the topic of parks separately from this. In, I believe, March, we are going to also be bringing forth a Parks Use Bylaw to the board, which we don't currently have. So just for the board's awareness. So that's not something we're waiting on the strategy for. That will be coming in the next few months here for consideration.
Thank you. And we move on to not completely unrelated overview of TNRD land assets. I gather we have a lot of unsuitable parkland available as among those assets, quote unquote. Mr. Vieira, third time's the charm.
You bet. Can't get rid of me that easy. All right. So presentation is going to pop up here. I'm just going to present or discuss a few specific properties that are highlighted in this report. But before I get into that, the intent of this report and what we'd committed to earlier in the year was there was a lot of discussion questions coming from the public about specific TNRD properties that we own, which are discussed in this report. So what we wanted to do is bring all of the properties that we own to the board. So now you have a full list of the properties. What this does not include is properties that we like lease, like any sort of tenured properties, but these are properties that we have basically fee simple ownership of. There is sometimes conditions on, on that ownership, which is covered in that summary. But the intent here is that, you know, you could dig into these properties at your discretion in your areas. And, and it does link well with the previous presentation that, that many of these are some of these subdivision parks that we acquired that are unmaintained, that we own. So, but to the, yeah, so I already spoke about that. Now, most of the large parcels that we own were purchased as part of the Eco Depot development over the last 15 years. And the purchase of those was funded by the Regional Solid Waste Service. I will note that at the time that we were developing those Eco Depots, although everything went through the solid waste service and funded through taxation, we did receive a significant grant of $11 million that went towards the overall development of those Eco Depots. So just for the board's awareness, that wasn't all TNRD tax dollars that went into those land acquisitions. And I just wanted to kind of put this upfront as kind of preliminary for this discussion around if, if the board wants to consider or direct us to, to look more specifically in sort of disposal of any land assets. Things to consider, future public use opportunities for that land. Obviously legislation around what we are required to do around disposal, specifically community charter talks about parkland disposal. And then around the subdivision, so what's the zoning requirements, both our own zoning or if it's within a municipality in some cases, whether it's ALR or not, riparian area restrictions. I'm just, these are kind of just a few things scratching the surface that if, if the board wishes for us to go down the road of disposal of a property, in many cases it'll, or in all cases it will require a fulsome report specific to that property that we would bring back to the board. So what I've done in this presentation is just highlighted the three properties that are highlighted in this report. And I think probably what would go the smoothest is if we could stop after each property and have the discussion if that's okay with the chair. There isn't any specific recommendations in this report. And I'll just leave it at that, I guess. So the Clearwater Eco Depot property that you see here, the Eco Depot is on the left side or the west side of this property. So even though there is a road dividing it, that's Road 2A, it is one parcel. So the total property is around 32 hectares. It was purchased in 2010. We do have an existing water license on the property. And now the east portion of the property is currently leased to Trans Mountain until the end of June. It was initially leased as the camp and now the camp has been deconstructed and now it's being leased for the purposes of storing and liquidating their equipment. So the camp is gone, but there's some structures and containers going in for storage of their equipment as sort of a hub for them to bring all the equipment in to, to sell it off. At, at this time and any sort of future plans in terms of Eco Depot operations, we have no need for that additional land. As you'll see here, there's the existing Eco Depot. There's a lot of space on the existing footprint. And when I go to this photo here, you can see the land surrounding the Eco Depot. We have land that we could expand around the Eco Depot if, if, you know, in future we needed an extra space to park vehicles or an extra building, something like that. We don't anticipate the need for any use on the opposite side of the road. This is obviously an old photo. I'll skip to the next. I just wanted to show that because it has the property boundaries. This is a Google image from probably earlier this year or last year. And it shows the whole Trans Mountain camp. So this land has been fully developed at Trans Mountain's cost and the solid waste service has been receiving the benefit of the lease payments, obviously offsetting taxation adding to the revenue for that service. And like I said, that lease is in place until the end of June at this point. They have had a habit of asking us for six months extensions on a regular basis as this project continues on. So the reason I'm bringing this one forward is this has been a, for those who are not in the North Thompson, or those who are in the North Thompson Valley knows that this is a very hot topic and has been for, for many years about what the TNRD intends to do with that land. From a staff point of view, my answer has been we have no future intentions for that land. It'll be up to the board. As I mentioned, if the board wants us to move towards liquidating that, it would actually have to be subdivided off and sold and we'd have to, that would go through the District of Clearwater as it's there. It's within their municipal boundaries. And, or the other option is to look at just continuing on the lease opportunity. There has been, how should I put this, rumors, ideas put forward from community members about projects that TNRD, the way it's coming across is what we should do with that land in terms of development of that property and providing, you know, other businesses that the TNRD would get into actually providing a business. Obviously that's not in our purview at this time. There's been no direction to pursue construction of anything there. So I will leave it at that for any questions or discussions on that property.
Director Stamer.
Thanks, Madam Chair. To Jamie, how large is that piece of property on the, on the layout chunk there?
Shoot, I should have measured that out. I think it's about 20 acres, but I will see if I can pull that up.
And is there a possibility to subdivide the other piece? So if we ended up wanting to say, keep our footprint still going to the south, I guess it is, could we actually, you know, slice off a piece in there?
In theory, yes. The subdivision process, we'd have to, again, look into it in more detail and what that would go through the city of.
And further zoning? And further, what is the zoning on the property?
Zoning is an industrial use on that property. Yeah. It's all, it was all zoned and owned as a, as a sawmill prior to us taking it over. Oh, and oh yeah, the other piece that I haven't mentioned, this one is in the ALR and I forgot to mention that. So the, currently the Trans Mountain as part of, we leased it to them, but they had to go through an exemption and they have a temporary exemption from the ALR, which expires when they leave the property. So anything we would do with this, as soon as they leave the property, that goes back to ALR restrictions on this piece of land.
So just to be clear, we have industrial zoning on ALR land?
Correct.
Director Smith.
Do we have any idea on market value?
No, we haven't done any appraisal of it.
Director Houghton.
Let's make this quick. Just somebody that has been involved in the ranching business for over 100 years and we've accumulated, accumulate all that land over 100 years. And if you got it bought and paid for, I'll just forewarn you that once you sell something, believe it, I know what we've done, sometimes you regret it. So just make long hard clear that you have no use for it down the road because once you sell it, it's gone. You're never going to get it back. If it's bought and paid for, just think really twice before you dispose of it because once it's gone, it's gone.
Thank you. Any other questions about the Clearwater Eco Depot project land? Director Saul.
Sorry, comment just in general. Do we, do, sorry, to staff, do we, do you feel there is a need for a policy for future asset acquisitions? For example, if we create new Eco Depots in the future, transfer stations or fire halls, like should we have a guideline that we minimize or maximize the land size that we acquire to either avoid excess land asset management or to provide potential return on investments?
Thank you. It's, it's a good question and, and maybe something I should have clarified at the beginning. The, well, to answer your question, Director Saul, I would say, no, there's probably not a need for that policy because we don't intend, we're not looking to acquire any more land for Eco Depots. The reason that all these properties that we'll go through, we acquired such large chunks of land as that was the size of the parcel and that suited us. So this kind of was land that came, came with the deal, if you will. And, and it was quite, for those who were on the board, it was quite the process and difficulty to actually find land that was suitable for this use. And, and that's why we ended up with these larger, and generally speaking, these rural areas, there were larger parcels that we acquired.
Thank you. No further questions on this particular piece of property? And I know it's not on the list, but I understand that the Boston Flats Eco Depot is the same. We had to buy quite a large chunk of land to get the very small portion that we actually wanted.
Yes. And I actually added that into this presentation as a late, late addition.
A late addition. Awesome. Better late than never. All right, moving on.
So the South Thompson Eco Depot, again, similar scenario where it is a large parcel that we acquired. Did we acquire it back in? We don't have the date here, but it was around 2010 as well. It's a 10 hectare property. It butts up to the Community Hall Rodeo Grounds property to the south end. So this is again identified as an opportunity that could be considered for subdivision and, and liquidation, if that's something the board wanted to do. Currently, the property zoned as P3 and this one actually happens to not be in the ALR, even though it is quite usable farmland and actually sections of the property we had leased to a local farmer to farm and maintain it. So this is what the Eco Depot looks like in Pritchard. So from an aerial view here, it's the, I guess, the, the top of the map, the northern portion where the Eco Depot exists. And then the kind of forested land heading to the south is, is the vacant property. Any questions or discussions on that one?
Director Houghton, Director Stamer.
Yeah, just caution you on this one. You had in your presentation that the Pritchard Rodeo Grounds use that for a parking area and the, the rodeo grounds themselves are very boxed in. And the 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 rodeo grounds themselves are very boxed in. Um, piece of ground that serves the community very well. And I wouldn't wanna, you know, disrupt the future of the rodeo because they got in order to park. So, you know, for for looking at the whole picture, I would take a very cautionary look at this one.
And and just for clarity, the. No, uh, oh, there we go. Um, it's this little field here that has been used as overflow parking during the rodeo events.
Thank you, Director Stamer.
Uh, thanks. Thanks, Madam Chair. I my my question was answered.
Any other questions on this particular property? Moving on.
Yeah, Lewis Creek Eco Depot, again, very large portion of property that we acquired for building that Eco Depot. It's two hundred and fifty hacker hectares, so it's um basically the entire mountain behind the Eco Depot that uh we own. Um, it's split zoning between rural and civic works. And I guess the point there is that this uh one item, this could be considered as part of a regional park strategy. If this was identified sort of a an area where maybe a trail or a lookout or something like that would want to be developed. So this is what the Eco Depot property looks like. Again, it's the the actual Eco Depot is at the very far corner of the property. Uh, towards the highway, so to the east of this map. And then if you. Try zoom in here. So, yeah, the Eco Depot is right there. And then this is a a full mountain here and Lewis Creek is along here. So it's a huge chunk of land that we own, including the 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 riverfront creek front, if you will. Um, and it's fully undeveloped here.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Director Hayward may want to have a chat with this as well. Can you put up the picture again of what the Eco Depot looks like, like like the like the footprint? Okay, so just just for clarification over on the far right-hand side where you see, looks like a glorified swimming swimming pool. That is now a district of barriers, brand new million-dollar water reservoir that we have there. Because that is the boundary that goes down in the LCIP, Lewis Creek Industrial Park. So we also have been in 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 talks with the TNRD to possibly uh develop a uh bulk water station up there as well. For two reasons. One, this is one of, you know, this, most of our Eco Depots does not have potable water. That we're all familiar with and Clearwater was fortunate enough to uh to get developed this this season. And so there's an opportunity for not only potable water, but also for fire suppression on our site at the Eco Depot. The second part is, if we had potable water or our bulk water system, then that we'd be able to do a wide variety of water delivery systems. Including water trucks, campers, that sort of thing. But just wanted to mention, on the topography map, it is a mountain and it's solid rock almost. And there's some significant access point issues if we want, if anybody wanted to develop it. So Mr. Viera is right inasmuch as that if going forward, we wanted to maintain ownership of that. That may be an opportunity for a trail system, bike system, similar to that. It's very steep going down into the creek. So really, there's not a lot of opportunities for an additional trail system. However, the District of Barrier does have a designated trail system that came from the previous monument um uh site. All the way through and up the creek. And of course, any development or anything that we do there is certainly gonna have to be with the consultation and the inclusion of Simp First Nations. Because they have a reserve to the to the bottom of that. And of course, that's in their, you know, their traditional territory. But I agree, that might be an opportunity going forward for specifically that purpose. Because especially after the fire came through, there's surely not much up there. So maybe there's some opportunities for some trails, uh, you know, maybe some uh replanting, those kinds of things. But uh, maybe Director Hayward has some comments on that as well.
Hi, um, number one, it's a spawning creek. Simp First Nation has a fish weir there and and it's Coho, I think, that comes up the creek. We already have a problem with that creek with people squatting in there, parking campers, growing drugs, other things, whatever they want to do. And that's been ongoing for like six or seven years. And unless they're out of there, there is a major problem. Um, as Ward says, the mountain is pretty much burned off, but you do get a great view up there. So there is a a destination that works. Um, it's also Crown Range for cattle, so that's all I can add at this point in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Lewis Creek? All right, thank you, Mr. Oh, Director O'Connor.
Thank you. I know you wanted to just focus on the three, uh, those three properties. But I'm wondering if you have any updates on the property owned in the Village of Litton.
CEO Hildebrand.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and true to Director O'Connor, it's something that uh we had hoped to bring to this meeting. And that was basically the property that we own in the Village of Litton. Uh, where the um, I guess, the town hall and our library once stood a few years back. Um, so that, uh, we've been in concert conference conversation with the CEO in Litton. Uh, I know, I think your uh your council has already had a a discussion about this in in meetings. So our intention is to bring that report back into January that provides a proposal on what we would like to, the board to take a look at it and consider. With respect to the potential sale of that land back to the village. Uh, and what that uh financial picture would look like. So that'll come back in January. Um, and hopefully we can make a decision there because our insurer is also um wanting us to make a decision. So that'll be coming shortly.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Viera, Boston Flats.
Boston Flats Eco Depot, uh, again, at the very southern tip of this property is where our Eco Depot is developed. This was a package deal that came with, again, a a large chunk of property. So there is um, uh, again, we have ALR on a majority of this property, not actually where the Eco Depot is. But um, if you look at the north end along the creek, it's ALR. Um, this is within the boundaries of Cache Creek as well. Uh, and I didn't have it on this map here, but actually this, we. Uh, the this property is acquired from Metro Vancouver when they were liquidating this property. And we actually own the property um that on the right-hand side uh or the the eastern side as well. So a bit of that mountain side we also own. Um, so there's, um, it's it's an old historic ranch site along the Bonaparte River there. That's a fairly flat and um, you know, has potential to have value for further development there. Um, but also this one can be highlighted as a potential starting point for a a regional trail system. Uh, the idea I think we talked about in the in June committee, the whole meeting, as one of the the concepts is a. Is a trail system that follows the Bonaparte connecting Cache Creek and Ashcroft because they're very dramatic landscapes there. And as a starting point, we just so happen to own property along that corridor. And that's just the uh Google uh image of the Eco Depot kind of on the the south end there and the the green portion along the river. This was obviously taken in the spring during high water. That uh river is full.
Thank you, Director Hutton.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Jamie, would there be any? Use that looking at maybe retaining ownership of that property, but maybe working with. Uh, maybe one of the vegetable growing folks from around that area or the local ranching agricultural operations that are there. And having a a lease in place that we still own the land, but they have use of it and we get some revenue. And it's actually producing something. Is there potential there?
Yeah, it's nothing we explored, but I think that that'd be worth exploring because there was um, you know, arable land along the valley bottom there.
Thank you. I'm uniquely positioned to answer this one. Um, the fellow it's named after tried to build a sluice there and flumes along there in the eighteen eighties. Uh, Boston Sanford, that's where Boston Flats comes from. Uh, he was unsuccessful in that the flumes were no good and they leaked. Um, and then in the nineteen forties, again, um, in the pages of the Ashcroft Journal in nineteen forty-eight, forty-nine. The property had been repurchased. Um, it was being redeveloped and it was used extensively to grow tomatoes for the Ashcroft cannery. Which was in place from nineteen twenty-three to nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, the tomatoes grown at Boston Flats were well-known for their quality. And uh, the area was found to be very, very fertile, like all the the volcanic soil in that region. If you can get water to it, you can grow just about anything. So certainly there would be agricultural possibilities for some of that land. Um, further downstream outside the area owned by the TNRD. You're getting into um a canyon which uh was used to power of Ashcroft's first power plant was there. The river was dammed. There's also a fishways. I don't think you can get down that far. It's pretty much impassable unless you're a a rock scaler. Uh, also Bonaparte First Nation uh would have, uh, would have to be consulted about any work further down the Bonaparte. But certainly that area up where that we own now, um, if you drive down to the Eco Depot and look across the river. There's some quite lovely spots down there. There is an old bridge, Mr. Viera says is not for the faint of heart, but you can use it. Um, so I think certainly there's some, there's some recreation opportunities in that area.
One more piece to add to the agriculture discussion. We actually have a water license as well that came with this property.
And there's, there's lots of historical stuff in addition to the ranch that you can see some of the old flumes that Boston Sanford tried to build. And some trestles, you can see the remains of the old power plant and dam that were built on the Bonapart. So there's, there's lots down there to see. It's just a question of of constructing some way to get down there. Because it is very, um, i- it is pretty inaccessible right now because there are no trails formal or otherwise.
So the, I actually, I'll skip this. This was already discussed. The subdivision parks would be reviewed as part of this uh um parks and trail strategy. And that concludes the presentation. I timed that well, eh?
You used to be a server, didn't you somewhere, Jamie? You must be with that kind of timing. All right, uh. So you can always tell someone who used to be a server because they'll ask you a question just as you put something in your mouth. That's a good way to, good way to tell. Uh, so we have a question from Director Grenier. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chair. All right.
Um, I just was wondering, we've had this uh uh exciting presentation from the Timic people yesterday. And I'm just wondering if this piece of property might uh help out in that situation at all? If that was something, is this an alternative site? Is that something that, given we've got an Eco Depot and maybe a composting site? Just wondering if that has got any value.
My, you know, putting on my solid waste hat, um, I would say no, that there's no opportunity to develop a landfill. Or a composting site on this property and um too close to the river for a composting site. And not large enough for a landfill.
And just, uh, Director, just to add to that, I know um, South Caribou Sportsman had considered it as a possible site. To which to relocate if they have to leave their current site. Uh, but I don't think, I think we agreed that it's not suitable for a gun club, gun range.
Yeah, I did have preliminary discussions with them and 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 I guess my my first thought on it was around um. The proximity to Cache Creek because actually, you're, when you're down that valley, right around the corner is the is uh. I mean, we, it's within the boundary of Cache Creek, but right around the corner is is already the developed home there. So you're you're pretty darn close.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Just sidearms only. Uh, question to staff, back when we were talking about the Litton properties and and CEO Hildebrand mentioned about insurances and things like that. Is there any significant timelines that are involved in that, in that discussion? And we talked about the lands in Litton and the um, where the previous uh buildings were.
Uh, through the chair, to Director Stamer, I guess, um, our insurer did reach us out to us recently and would like an answer. So we are, I'm not sure how imminent it is, but we are expecting to bring that back in January for final decision.
Any other questions or comments? CEO Hildebrand.
I just wanted to, um, I wanted to thank Director Blackwell for adding a a grocery list request to his. To his blackboard I sent him and he added chips and dip to the back of it, behind him on the screen. He's got a grocery list going there. So thank you, Director Blackwell.
And Director Blackwell, I did see your hand up earlier when we were discussing Clearwater and then you had to to leave. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, not at this time. I'll I'll touch base with uh Mr. Viera at a future time. Um, just because I didn't, wasn't able to watch the whole uh presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. To Director Blackwell, Director Blackwell, can you explain a little bit on how you have a piece of uh industrial land? That the TNRD owns in your municipality, but it's under ALR regula regulations? Can you briefly explain what would be the uh usages, usages that would be permitted on that piece of property if we did decide to sell it?
Um, I would have to look at the ALR boundaries there. I think uh, I think there are ALR regulations on part of the larger parcel. But I don't necessarily think that, I'm not a hundred percent sure that the area um that uh could be parsed off and sold. Is part of that. Um, somebody would have to correct me on that because the 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 boundaries of the ALR uh transact several properties there. Um, but right now, as it sits, it's a a very large flat, uh somewhat uh leveled and. Um, developed in the sense that it has a highly power going there or fairly significant power and water going to that site. Um, thanks to Trans Mountain and the TNRD. Um, so it it would be incredibly valuable or useful piece of uh industrial land in Clearwater. Considering the vast majority of the rest of the industrial land in Clearwater is um, is brownfield. Um, so uh it attracts probably more attention uh from community. As a future place for commercial use or industry than any other chunk of land in town. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it definitely needs to be part of the discussion, um, what we do with that chunk of land.
Is there any uh information and help that the uh District of Clearwater would be able to provide to the TNRD in regards to that? Because I will, I thought that anything that the that Trans Mountain does, especially in that leasing position, as soon as they uh give it back. They have to give it back in the same state that they had found it. Is that true?
Uh, I'm not, I don't believe that's true. I think that's the case when it comes to parkland, that it has to be restored to some status. But um, if it's not deemed parkland, I don't believe that's true.
And I I could speak to that as well. The um, the the, the agreement that we have with the with Trans Mountain. Had required them to return it if we so wished. Um, so we opted to accept it with the improvements they made instead of having it to be returned. So it's a little different scenario than the Blue River property, which we discussed this board where that's a crown tenure that we have. So we're involved in it, but it's not fee simple land that we own, whereas this is.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Director Thorpe.
It's totally off topic, but I just got an message from Modi. We're open for two lanes on Highway One at Falls Creek. Came in about five minutes ago.
For those of you who wonder where Falls Creek is, better known as Jackass Mountain, which apparently causes Minister Fleming no end of amusement. Uh, it's also one of the, I think it's the only stop of interest sign, those green signs around the province. It's the only one with an actual image on it of a jackass kicking. Fell over the mountain, poor thing, gave it its name. So the province, for whatever reason, prefers to use Falls Creek. I don't understand. But that is, that is good news. It will be moving to three lanes and that hope that will be complete, the permanent repairs at Falls Creek. And the three lanes will be opening sometime next year. And work is continuing at Tank Hill, where there is going to be great separation. And at Nickaman, which according to Director O'Connor is now one lane. So what you, what you gain getting through Jackass quickly, you're gonna lose at Nickaman, so. They didn't mention that in the press release from the province. We'll hold it on a positive, so no more, no more delays at Jackass. Any other questions or comments? CEO Hildebrand.
Uh, thank you, since we're sharing some uh updates. Um, we heard back from Silga now. We are a go, a go ahead for the welcome reception of sponsorships. So I just wanted to let the board know that and let them know that um pizza and lunch will be served here shortly. Um, just outside the the doors and the reception for the, or the long service presentation, which will actually be relatively short. Unfortunately, we have a lot of people gone at uh this time of the year. We're thinking of actually bumping it back to November for next year. Um, but that'll start at twelve-thirty.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you. Um, we'll see you for pizza and then we'll see you back for the hospital board meeting, which is. All right. Well, thank you. We'll see you for pizza and then we'll see you back for the hospital board meeting, which is at one-thirty. Yes? All right. See you all back here.